Few minutes for Director Wes Moreland. Director Clerk Thompson will not be joining us this evening. He had family obligations. There she is.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, Jen.
I feel like Norm. Thank you.
Yes, you did.
I was like trying to.
Oh, gosh.
Basically pull you. You did. You can say your own hi, Jen, though. That's still allowed.
Well, we all like in serial form are like, hi, Jason. Hi, Jason. Hi, Jason.
I like that it's choreographed. It's very satisfying.
That was our fearless leader's idea.
All right, since we're all present and accounted for, we can get started with our workshop for this evening. Welcome back, everybody, from what I hope was a lovely summer break. And we are looking forward to getting back into board business. So to kick off the workshop for this evening for the Hopkins Public Schools School Board, we're going to go ahead and look at our board goals. I sent out a copy of our current board goals to all of the board directors. And we're going to go ahead. Natalia, if you want to present that. Every year, the board establishes new goals for the year. And so this is an ideation session for all board members to contribute to those goals and to see if we want to continue any from last year because we don't feel like we quite achieved that goal or it is an ongoing part of board work. Or if we want to change them and/or put in new ones. So hoping everyone had a chance to just kind of glance over. We do this periodically, especially throughout the year. Mid-year, we give updates as to how we are progressing toward our goals and then also an update at the end of the school year. So with that being said, does anyone have anything they'd like to add? Did we all have a chance to kind of look through them? Do we also feel comfortable with the way in which they're structured? I feel like we did a really good overhaul under Director Wes Moreland's leadership about aligning with our strategic leadership framework that all Hopkins School districts use to advance Vision 2031. So I feel like that's a nicely aligned practice. But if other board members have thoughts on if something would be more useful, helpful, maybe more communicative to the general public, open to that discussion as well.
Chair Andreessen, I just wanted to check with Dr. Mary Perry-Reed to make sure that those categories are still what district leaders are using to do their goal setting and evaluation work or if we need to adjust those a little bit.
So our strategic plan as part of Vision 2031 includes three goal areas: teaching and learning, district and school culture, and operations. And then we have equity, empathy, and innovation themes interwoven throughout those goal areas.
Okay. So an opportunity for additional alignment by really being explicit about those themes, perhaps, because I think they appear here. But if we wanted to be even more in alignment, we could call those out more specifically.
Are those annual themes that shift?
No, they are not annual. They are embedded in our strategic plan as offering a space for both for long-term goal setting as well as year-by-year deliverable articulation. But I do see on the document that we do have teaching and learning, school district culture, operations. So it seems like there's some really good alignment and they will not change.
So the themes are equity, empathy, and what else?
Innovation.
Thanks, Jen.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other thoughts on those? Do we all feel comfortable?
Chair Andreessen?
Yeah.
I do feel comfortable with the structure and would be completely fine with kind of explicitly aligning with those themes or not, kind of depending on how we feel once this work is completed. I think it might be helpful, I mean unless someone has something big that they want to devote a lot of time, far as possibly even just going section by section. And it would be good, I think, to go through our key actions and see how we did. I don't know if there's ever a place where we, I know that we do kind of a mid-year checkup of this, I don't know if there's ever a place where a board workshop or something where at the end of the year where we provide feedback to think about this. But I appreciate it being right here at the start of the school year and that you allotted so much time to think about it.
Great. Yeah, I think how we've done it in the past is we do go goal area through and then the key actions is where we do give those updates. Like you said, Treasure Heartland, around how we're advancing toward those goals and/or if we feel like we've achieved it and we want to continue going forward or feel like, you know, that's done, let's have a different goal. So with that, unless there's any other comments on the overall structure, we can go to goal area number one, which is teaching and learning. And this is, I think, focused on our school board professional development, which I think has become increasingly difficult, I think, for all of us to do in kind of more of the traditional way. I don't think a lot of us feel comfortable traveling around the country anymore. But I'm also impressed with how creative all of us are in getting that professional development. And specifically, I think that we've, our key actions have been. Okay.
Hi.
Our key actions have really been focused on ways in which we will have, I think, a deeper and broader understanding of what our district staff is implementing in the classrooms. So just wanting to get some ideas about where we're at with those goals and where we feel like we could add on or adapt. Any thoughts on those?
I think the key actions are certainly applicable to our work moving forward. I appreciate in the second, one, that last line in awareness of community needs is essential to be proactive instead of reactive. I think that's really important and it's something that we've done a good job of as a board, remaining aware of what the community needs are, even if due to fiscal constraints, we can't always meet those needs. And so I think it's, I would support keeping these key actions in and moving them forward and adding one that has to do with coordinating with other school boards and school board organizations to really protect public education during this period when funding is being stripped away, when protections for students are being stripped away, to be really proactive about that. And I think that as I look at the three categories, it seems to fit best here. But obviously, I'm open to your input on that.
Chair Andreessen?
Yes.
Can I piggyback off of Director Wes Moreland? I do think that is really important. I think all these key actions are very critical, especially also outlining the awareness of community needs. I think that's something that we, you know, could, one, be more in community and engaging more in community events and understanding the different cultural needs that we have. And I do like the fact that we are a proactive district, not reactive and try our best to implement, you know, to implement initiatives to support our families and our student achievement. And I do agree that it's really important for us to connect with other school boards and to with other school board organizations to understand where they're going and to learn from them as well because there are some things that other districts are doing that we may not be aware of that's working over in their district. And so I think developing that key relationships would be, is going to be very vital moving forward, especially where we are currently today.
Thank you. Let me know if I can spell a word. Let me know if this captures what you both were talking about. So one of the key actions would be school board directors will actively partner with elected officials, specifically other school board directors across the state. We could put in nation to protect and defend our families' rights to a public education.
I like that. I'm seeing now that in community presence, we do have a key action that has to do with advocacy. It's specific to caregivers and we have a resolution coming forward at the meeting later that addresses that as well. So yeah, I guess I'm just questioning where we should put it, but I really like that word.
The seek engagement?
Right. Yeah, like, can you read it again? Can you read the really good thing you wrote?
"School board directors will actively partner with elected officials, specifically other school board directors across the state and nation to protect and defend our families' right to a public education."
You said our families' right?
Mm-hmm.
Should it be our students' rights or?
It could be.
Our student and families? Because.
I feel like it's families, too.
Yeah.
Maybe they don't have a right to it, but.
No, they definitely have a right.
We could change that. We'll go to the Supreme Court.
But it also sounds okay, too, though. Like, it'll be fine if it stays family.
I think if we place the key, that key action right after the second one, because we talk about learning, best and next practices, and we talk about community, then it's kind of like, and then we're going to use these, this information to do this, right? To partner with electeds across jurisdictions. So I think then the flow makes sense.
Do we all like that? And I can continue to wordsmith and if people have any ideas, because we'll be presenting this at the future board meeting. So we can certainly make changes going forward. Any other thoughts on this first section? Do we like our, we like all of these so far still?
Chair Andreessen?
Yeah.
So on the fourth bullet, I'm just wondering if we could do something else to try to reach people, right? I think we've talked in the past about, you know, there's a certain subset of people that know about the workshops and, you know, listens to our board reports. But is there anything else that we can do to reach the folks that don't attend these things, right? Thinking maybe like farmers' markets or, I don't know, just having somewhere, somehow, some way to reach folks where they're at. I'd be interested to think if we could be innovative in that outreach.
And I think that, I know that for me, a lot of that, it feels like it fits in the community presence, the school district and culture.
Okay.
And I have some ideas that I've been thinking about as we're moving into this next year that I think would speak to what you're talking about. If, does everyone feel comfortable moving to the next sessions? Sections, we can talk about that. But I also agree, Director Zhao, that this fourth action leads directly into how do we get that information to our community?
Yeah.
Because I think that's essential. Oftentimes, I think it does just stay in this room.
Yeah.
And we might want to, for that report, I mean, we've always put board member reports at the end of the meeting. And maybe just an idea we could think about, would there be a way in which if something is really impactful to our community, we could do a short thing like that, that a board member's bringing something from some national meeting that they went to or something that they could have 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting when more people are paying attention and awake? So that might be something we want to discuss, where those board member reports fall in the meeting. So I like that idea. That could be something we talk about.
Chair Andreessen?
Yes.
Do we have a place, do you have a separate document or could we create one about sort of the methodology as we're having these conversations? You just mentioned one way where potentially we could move the timing of school board member reports. Another that potentially comes to mind is, I don't know that this needs to be a requirement, but a board member giving a report could specifically reference a goal area, potentially. We could say, you know, in support of goal area number one, I did this thing. So we could tie it back and that would keep it to the front of our mind a little bit. And then when we're trying to evaluate ourselves mid-year, we'd have something to point to that'd be a thing that potentially I could take on, would be to go back and be like, I heard, you know, we had nine reports, say, on goal area number two and nothing on three. So that's a thought. And then I also wanted to voice support for this idea of bringing the board to the people a little bit. And that's kind of very specifically why I wanted to know if you wanted to make a separate document with notes about potential ways we could do this.
Sorry, Rachel, are we moving then into goal area number two?
I, yeah, I suppose you told Director Zhao that that's where he wanted to discuss that. So sure, as long as everyone else is ready.
Okay. And as far as a separate document, I'm kind of making the notes in this document.
Okay.
Just so that if it comes to things developing into a key action, they'll be part of our board goal document. If we do at some point want to shift things from a board goal to maybe something that we're looking into more, we can, I think it's a good idea to have a document like that. And I think Natalia set one up for us last year. So we can definitely shift those things over once we determine where we want them to live, if they're a developing idea or if they're a part of our goal document.
Okay.
So thanks for that. Okay, so we move on then to school district and culture. And that is our community presence, where I think a lot of this thoughts and ideation have been going on. And I want to preface this with, these have always been, I think, a big part of board work and we've focused on them. So just to let everyone know and to remind all of us, we do pair up with schools and we participate in the events of those schools and intentionally engage there with the community. School board members are expected to be present at district events whenever possible. And school board members will hold engagement sessions about school board decisions. And we will actively seek engagement of caregivers and committee work. And school board members will collaborate with student board representatives and that they will serve on committees of the school board. And I believe there's a specific ask around that, Director Wes Moreland. But I also think one of the things that I am wanting to be more intentional about is talking about our communications practices as a board. What we have found, and I would say the past year and a half to two years, is that communications and interactions with the school board have gone, gotten to the point where they're almost at pandemic levels. And so if the board would entertain the idea, I would like us to revamp how we are accountable as a board for our community presence and engagement. One of the things I think that is critical is that we have an automatic reply to emails that come into the board that say, it says something like, and we can talk about what that would look like, but we've received your email, we, you know, appreciate that you're reaching out to us. Someone who has some understanding or not quite jurisdiction, but has some ability to respond to your email will get back to you within a week. And then at that point, myself and the superintendent can designate who would respond to that email. And because I think it's largely falling on Dr. Mary Perry-Reed to respond to most emails, because most emails we get are not about board governance, they are about operations. And, but I feel like it is the board's responsibility to have that initial response to the community to say, someone will get back to you and then we will go through and decide who's responding. I also think that we can start making sure that a board member, like if it's coming from a specific school, if that is your school, then it would be your responsibility to reply directly to that community member alongside whatever staff member is designated. So that they know that the board is listening. I mean, we are, we read everything. But this would increase our engagement with the community by saying, I'm here, I hear you, I am specifically linked to this programmer school. Do people feel comfortable with that shift?
Chair Andreessen, would that be a slippery slope for like the high school, for instance? So since there's not a principal there at the moment and we have interims, I guess where I'm seeing it is that, to your point, since most of, in my opinion, most of the feedback that I'm seeing is more operational.
Yes.
That is probably where I'm like, hmm, I don't know how comfortable I feel, especially if I'm not aware of like, if there was a fight that happened at the school, I'm not aware of all the details and I want to be very careful about. I mean, I could send like a broad statement of like, we see your feedback, somebody in the administration will get back to you. That I feel good about. Anything more than that, I don't feel good about from an operational perspective. But that's, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
Maybe we're saying the same thing.
No, I, yeah, I agree with you. And I think that would be, like, I think that we as board members would have to really be careful about what we're communicating as like the assigned board member. And to your point, if you don't feel comfortable replying, then that becomes something that you could say, like, you know, I don't know anything about this. Shannon, can, can you send it to Rota? Or what I often do in my emails to community members is I say, I have CC'd the appropriate staff member on this email and then leave it at that. But yes, board members would have to feel comfortable in their replies and to be measured in their replies.
Sure. Yeah.
So yeah, I think everyone would have to feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, that I'm not concerned, it's just, there's always two sides of a story.
Yeah.
And that's where I'm like, hmm, unless you do like, and depending on like how much time you have to do an investigative, like, understanding, to me, I feel like it could be a slippery slope because then you don't want to say something and then next thing you know, nope, that, all the facts. I was, everybody, I was raised by a lawyer, so that's just my lawyer, that's just the child of a lawyer is like, you have to be very careful if you don't have all the full facts of the situation. So that's where, for me, I'm not speaking for anybody else.
Well, I think, I think you probably are because I'm seeing lots of nods. So maybe we do want to keep, our current practice of operations goes to admin and then school board. We have already replied by saying the appropriate staff person or appropriate person will reply within a week to your email. Do you feel comfortable with that, Dr. Mary Perry-Reed?
Thank you for asking. So two things. I'm not sure what that reply is going to look like. So I think we need to clarify if, because the entire board and the superintendent receive, and Natalia, receive the emails. And then is the designated board member only replying to the individual and CCing the superintendent? So not a reply all? Is that correct? And then also, I think because the superintendent is the board's employee, then it's always, it's going to be important that the superintendent always gets CC'd. And then I will designate which additional staff persons, if not me, will follow up with the operational response.
Yeah. And I think what we're talking about is that we would have an automated response when an email comes in through the form. The automated response would, I think, go to, can it go to everyone?
So we need to figure that out?
No, it can't. So it would just go to the person who sent in the email? So it would go to them and it would say the appropriate staff person or appropriate person will get back to you within a week. And then from there, you and I could decide who it goes to, knowing that 99% of them go to you.
Okay.
But if it was a board, I would give it to the appropriate board person, like.
Sure.
I would be like, oh, you know, Jen is the board member at West. And so then she could reply instead of it always coming from me.
Okay.
Do you feel like that's a good practice?
I think that's a good system. And then I did want to just clarify that we do have a leadership structure at the high school that is operating in the form of a principal with Lisa Tao being the lead. But the four administrators will be working in concert with, together all the time to step into that, to that leadership role. So we're, we're operating with them as though there is a principal there because technically there are four. And it's an interim model, just to clarify.
Thank you.
But I do like that structure. I think it's a smart idea.
Great.
Chair Andreessen?
Yes.
We have a document that's called Board Processes for Communication that we created during COVID and then updated as we all came back in person. And I agree with you that it would be an appropriate goal to revisit that document and the processes.
Oh, great.
So we already have a template for it. So kind of a lot of these things have already been worked through, like the technical aspects. But I think if the, if the goal, if the, if the action item could be, you know, the board revamps board processes for communication, something like that, just really high level, then that gives the board the opportunity to have a more in-depth conversation at a workshop and kind of work through some of the, the technical aspects. And then really identify like, what is the goal of having the automatic response? You know, I think that that's an important question. Like, what are we really trying to achieve here? Are we wanting to ensure that community members know we've received it? Do we want community members to know that they're heard? You know, like getting really a little more granular about that, about the why. And then I think an important part to bring into the conversation, because communication is a two-way street. And I'm, I'm so happy that we don't have a real strong culture of vitriol and abusive language in Hop, in our Hopkins Schools community. I know that other districts are struggling with this a lot more. But I think something to consider would be, you know, and we say this during our public comment guidelines, but you know, broadly speaking, that, you know, I think that there is agreement across Minnesota that we really need to tone down the vitriol and the hateful rhetoric. And so acknowledging that as a value that we hold in our board communication processes as well. So obviously a lot there to talk about. So I, I really like the idea of having it as a goal for us this year.
Thank you. So the goal would be to revisit the board processes for communication and increase board accountability.
And I'm going to share that doc so that everybody has it.
That'd be great. Another piece of this, and it, I'm not quite sure where it, we kind of broke up. I think, I guess it would be more board culture. But one of the other things we were talking about for communications is to start hosting like a, a number of our board colleagues locally nearby host what they call listening sessions. And those are separate from board meetings. One of the things that as board chair I feel responsible for is how long our meetings are going. And I think last year we saw very late meetings where I think few of us at the board table feel like we can do our job to the best of our ability at that point. And so hoping that these listening sessions would be a space in which the community could come and it would satisfy that desire to be heard by the board. And these would be above and beyond our engagement sessions, which are limited to three board members and are a space in which community members can ask questions and get responses. It's more of a back and forth. But the listening sessions would be a space in which community members could show up, could address the board. And then at that meeting, at that time, we would assign a board member or a staff member to reply to that community member. Wondering if that kind of goes within what you're think, what you said, Director Westmoreland, around processes for communication? Or if we feel like that would be a separate key action item to establish a format for those and to get dates and, and those kinds of things? Just wondering what you're thinking? Or if you think we meet enough and maybe don't need those at this time?
Chair Andreessen?
Yes.
Uh, I think that's a, a great idea. I guess logistically would, is there a requirement for transmitting it online? And could we, and if not, could we, you know, round rob in our schools, right? And maybe that, you know, the folks that don't have a car or transportation, they can go to familiar area and, you know, kind of be where they know the school is, right? And, and, you know, or, or are you thinking it's always going to be here at like, in the community center?
So are, are you proposing like kind of a hybrid situation? Or like maybe alternating, like we could have in-person and virtual? Like one is virtual, one's in-person?
Yeah, I guess that's my question is.
Yeah.
What's the format, right? Are we, I mean, is it going to be in-person, online, you know? I'll be curious what people think.
Yeah. I feel like virtual would be easier. Right, then, but I don't know then, do we run into issues where people have to be part of our Google staff? Like, how could people join? Are there any tech constraints for having a listening session virtually? With the board?
We'd want to prove that they're in the district, right? They have a student here or, or either they're in the community or they have a student here. I would think.
I think it's more around how structured we want the Q and A portion to be, or if it's more.
I don't think there would be a, a portion. It's just a listening session.
Oh, just listening.
Yep. The engagement sessions are the ones where we just have three. So it would be basically an expansion of our public comment?
Oh, sure. Okay.
Chair Andreessen? I didn't really follow that. Is it possible to have like a virtual listening session or no?
Yeah, it would be possible.
Okay.
It would just be around what does moderation look like then? As well as if it, you know, if it's open and it's open everywhere, would we have to have some sort of a location verification or something like that? That would really have to be, some details there would have to be figured out. But I think those are the two items that most immediately come to mind that would have to be considered.
Okay. Thank you. So I have down here, I think, are most of us in agreement that we like the idea of having these? And did you have something to say, Rachel? Sorry.
Yes, I did. And I am interested in board listening sessions and in this, you know, collaborating with other school districts and have taken some time to look into it a bit. And I know that in Bloomington and Robbinsdale, they have forms that you must fill out. So similar to how if you show up here, you have to fill out a comment card. Or if you're going to leave a voicemail, there's a time cutoff. So there's either an online form or, or someone can call. And there's a time cutoff in order to participate in the listening session. I know in other districts, if nobody signs up for it, the listening session does get canceled. I know that in at least one district, they only post audio. And that has allowed them some flexibility with location. Though I think typically the location is in their boardroom. But one other thing that it does is it kind of reduces people's potential anxiety about appearing before the board. Because as you mentioned, Director Zhao, I mean, we, the amount of people that, like on one hand, we get hundreds of emails. And on the other hand, those hundreds of emails often come from the same, say, 75 stakeholders. Not exclusively, of course, but there's a portion of our community that is comfortable with engaging with the board, has the time to engage with the board, is okay with speaking on camera. And so there's some ways and potentially in which this listening session could either meet people, you know, be virtual and meet people more where they are. Or even as a matter of public record, be less high stakes.
Thank you. Okay, so I have, one additional goal is that school board members will revamp board processes for communication and increase board accountability. I think we can say to the community, yes?
Chair Andreessen, can I?
Yes.
Ask a quick question? So in terms of board communication, I know that often when we are assigned to schools, like I did, you know, like a few school tours. But really want to understand like what, like what is our goals of like our school tours and our school visits? So I don't know if they're, and maybe this is the document that Director Westmoreland is talking of. But like, do we have like certain governance questions that we can ask, you know, like the principals? Just to kind of get like their feedback on governance things and bring it back to the board regarding like that specific school? So we won't really get into like operational things, you know? And, and if they do want to share operational feedback, that's totally fine. And we provide that to Dr. Mary Perry Reed. But operational things in terms of like policy and, you know, or some things that like are a potential violation or something at the school that may have gone unnoticed, then we take that feedback and bring it to the board as a whole and address it that way. Just ask like some key talking points when I'm going. Cause I noticed that, you know, folks may feel intimidated when a school board member just comes into, into a tour and visit their classrooms. I want to just make sure that I'm being very effective in my school board tours. And also is there, whether we could do maybe more collaboration with our principals? So could we maybe attend one of their coffee with the principals? And just let people know that we are their board reps? Cause I don't think a lot of people know that we are, that their school even have a board rep. So I think, I know Dr. Nolan does them pretty frequently. Like he does them in the morning or sometimes he'll do them in the evening. Or even just like co-host like an event or, I don't know, maybe like co-host an event. But I think definitely the coffee with the principal. And we don't have to sit there and talk or anything, right? But just showing presence and being in there for support to let them know that we're the board rep. And sharing the process of, hey, you know, if you do have a concern, you know, I am your school board rep. Please reach out to me. And I think that will lessen the confusion of like people addressing the whole board about a specific school and just maybe all gatewood parents come to me and all tangling parents go to Director Westmoreland, you know? So I think we can tighten up that process just a little bit.
Yeah, thanks for that. And I think too, I like your idea of, you know, the more you're at the school and you introduce yourself to parents, they'll come to know that that's your school. And also I know a big one is PTO. I think Director Zhao, you go to the PTO meetings at your school. That's a great way for parents to get to know you. So thanks for that. Anything else on this topic? Oh, and so the, the other goal is board listening sessions will be established to account for format, frequency, moderation, security concerns. At that meeting, a follow-up designee will be assigned. At that meeting, I said it twice. And the speaker will know who that is. Does that sound good to everyone?
Yes. Chair Andreessen?
Yes.
For number, I have thoughts about a couple more of these bullet points. Number four, school board members will actively seek engagement of caregivers in board committee work and advocacy. While I like the spirit of it, it carries like kind of very little meaning for me. And the operation of each committee is just, is such that the like, the appropriateness and the, the ability to do so and then the method by which you do so seems so varied that I have a hard time. Like I don't want to take out actively seek engagement. I want to more actively seek engagement, but that piece doesn't have a lot of meaning to me. And would rather wrap it up in something specific like the third. Like I'd rather us adjust the, this third bullet point about where we might hold engagement sessions. And maybe, you know, in this committee work, like for example, policy is there in the third bullet point. Like I'd rather kind of designate a few areas in which we might hold engagement sessions than keep this vague fourth bullet point.
I think the thought behind that was to ensure that we have caregiver voice on our committee work. Which I think engagement sessions are different. So, you know, I'm thinking about the LAC. And I'm thinking about CFAC. And just, yeah. So I don't, I think the engagement sessions have a different function than what the committee work, what this one is trying to reach. Does that make sense?
It does. And I also, I, I can appreciate that this is a different piece. It still feels too broad, unmeasurable, like we will never take that. Like, would we ever say that that goal was achieved? And maybe that's not even really the function of this document. But there's a couple of things on here that strike me as either really vague or like kind of business as usual, like we'll be present at district events. And like, that's fine, we can, there's no reason we need to take that off of there. It is like, it's, it's just a few pieces that seem difficult to measure, difficult to say that we've accomplished. And then therefore are they goals or are they like expectations?
Yeah, and are they action items? Right? Other thoughts?
Well, I know, I know I keep bringing this up, but we do have this resolution tonight that's coming forward that's all about a family engagement plan, a caregiver engagement plan. And I think that the idea of welcoming caregivers into committee work, that also comes with a time commitment. The times when our committees meet are not always feasible for community members. It's not always feasible for them to join us. And then as the, the resolution that we're going to talk about tonight addresses, there's, there's a financial aspect too, that people are missing out on work. And so I'm wondering if this could be, like the goal could just be broader until we see what happens with the resolution tonight and kind of the actions coming out of that. And so that it could be more aligned instead of like, we're talking about this thing over here and then we're talking about this thing over here. Does that make sense, just in terms of process?
How about this? I like what you're saying, Director Westmoreland, and you too, Treasure Heartland. So I revamped it to say, school board members will address barriers to full caregiver engagement in board committee work and advocacy.
Love it.
Okay.
I was gonna say, that, that sounds good.
And we can already check it out, Brooke. I like that. Thanks. Thanks. Did you want to do anything about the be present at district events?
I mean, I don't, again, I don't think that it's bad on there and like we'll continue to do something. It just was that, um, I think it's fine.
Or we could put a number so it's measurable.
A number of how many events, like one board member attends?
Or we could say, "A board member, at least one board member will be present at all district events."
All?
All.
Including athletic events?
I, I, I will chime in and say, I think that's unrealistic for me.
You're like, no, no.
I mean, I, I think-
There are a lot of events, if you think about open houses, kindergarten play nights, athletic events. So then you might have to specify which kind of events you're wanting to be, you know, rotating through.
Yeah, if I didn't have three kids, I could probably be at, I could be in Jamaica right now too, so.
I guess I don't think that it's a bad thing if the key actions list just gets longer. Kind of shows that we more fully understand our, our role and I don't think it's a bad thing to keep on there. And I guess in a way, the school board members will be present at district events is not the actual goal, right? The actual goal is as representatives of the community, it's important that school board members engage with scholars, staff, parents, caregivers and community members to understand their priorities and how the school board's decisions impact them. So potentially there's some amount of needing to think about our goals, measurability, but this specific bullet point that I, and I'm the person who brought it up, is not measurable. I don't, I think it's a good example of a key action and doesn't need to be measurable in and of itself.
I mean, we could say a major district or major district events, because I feel like there'll be a board member at the Rockin' Royal. I would assume there'd be at least one board member there. There will be at least one board member at one of the games, um, basketball for men's and women. I mean, you could go down the list. I usually feel like when we're all either giving board reports or, I mean, I've seen a few of us out Halloween and Hopkins, so I mean, I feel like I've seen people out in the community. But yeah, I think maybe either major district events versus, yeah, I'm not going to go to every single kindergarten roundup or, I mean, some of us has probably been at least one PTO meeting.
That's true. Chair Andreessen, as we're talking about events, is there a way that we can like have name tags for us? So like when we are at events that we can have a name tag? And then also like when we do go to events like Halloween and Hopkins or, you know, like the Raspberry Festival, that we maybe have like some little paraphernalia to give out, like board paraphernalia, like little gravels or something? Something that we can give out to kids, because I do think there's a gap of understanding of what a school board member is and what we do. And so maybe we have like little informational things of what a school board member is.
That's cool.
We don't have to have like, you know, like a major book, but I think something to give folks an understanding. Because I think there is this assumption that we know like what a school board is. And I've had to explain to like several staff member what a school board is and like they work at the Hopkins district. So, um, I think there's something there and I think some cute little stress balls or something. I, I don't know, we have our own like logo for school board, but just something.
Stress ball seems on brand, so.
They do.
Here's a school board stress ball.
I also think that one of the, um-
That's funny.
One of the key actions should be that Z is required to-
On your email page.
School board stress ball?
Just a picture of it. I also think that one of the key actions should be Z is required to be at every major district event doing balloon animals.
Yes. Or as a panda.
Or wearing the panda costume.
Doing balloon animals in the panda.
That's embarrassing.
We could put in our budget ticket a new one.
How about this, Brooke? That, um, one of the key action items under this would be to increase understanding of who and what school board members are and their role in the community. Does that work as an action item? Okay. So we have five minutes, of course, in classic fashion. So wondering if we can, can get through goal three, operations. And the first, of course, is fiscal transparency and understanding. Wondering if anyone has any thoughts on these? I feel like we did a great job last year, um, we can pat ourselves on the back, of really endeavoring to do that by hosting engagement sessions. I in particular appreciate your reports, Treasure Heartland, and the way in which you connect them to the LAC advocacy. But just wondering if we want to do more, do different this year? And, right, we do have that we will partner with the superintendent and director of business services to hold a budget education. Do we want to change that to fiscal director of finance?
You mean the title of the?
Mm-hmm.
No, we can keep the title, director of business services, employed by CSO if, yeah.
Okay.
I think my thoughts are, I think this first one's the most pertinent to me, though of course all of them are pertinent to all of us. We did manage to hold a budget engagement session last session and, and something that I'll be looking forward in, um, business service leadership is some partnering on that and how to get even more people involved. I am really proud when people come to us, come to the meetings to talk to us about the budget and have spreadsheets and are, have their ideas, because I don't feel like that is something that would have been very possible just a short time ago. And so I like the work that we've done to kind of break the budgeting process down and I'm excited about continuing that work. The fourth one feels a little bit too specific possibly. And what I think instead, I kind of, I can see you typing there and I think talking about the, the interplay of the levels of government and how we are facing challenges from funding that comes towards our schools at, from different levels, being changed or challenged or frozen. And, um, that's work that I feel pretty strongly about. And specifically that mechanism of privatization seemed very specific and not something that we really did last year.
How are we feeling like? So board members will acquire an understanding of the unique pressures upon public education and its impact on school funding from, from all levels? Or we could say from federal-
Impact on school funding like you have it is. Possibly fine.
Local. Or just impact on school funding. Keep it simple. And share that with the community. How does that sound?
Personally, I like it.
Okay, and now policy, this is where you get to shine, Vice Chair Ross. Policy transparency and understanding. Are we feeling like these still hold true? I think we also did a great job last year, in particular around the cell phone policy, of being very transparent, collecting tons of feedback from our community. In particular, I loved the ways in which students felt empowered to speak up about their experience and staff as well. But any other thoughts on these goals? Are they good? Do we want to do anything different or better this year?
I think I still like these three particular goals, but we'd be open to if we would like to amend. Because I know to your point, um, when we were working on the cell phone policy, I was pretty expansive with, one, seeking the feedback of our peers here at the table, initial feedback. And then, you know, working, it was, it was actually very robust to be able to reach out to the community, parents, students. Not shocking that both parents and students weren't on the same page of like, uh, when it came to the cell phone. So I thought it was a very robust, I mean, the only thing I could see is we didn't hold like a listening session per se. I think we were up against a very tight timeline that it needed to be basically executed and then approved by the board, put in, you know, process and then implemented. And I think most of the questions that at least I was seeing were about implementation versus the actual policy per se. You guys can keep me honest, but that was, I think if my memory serves me correct, I would say ninety percent of the emails had to do with, how is this going to be implemented? How are you guys going to be able to ensure that students? So, I mean, I'd be open to if we want to add more on here, but definitely I like the, I mean, I would be interested to see what a community engagement, um, session would be with a, a major policy change. But, yeah, I like these.
Great.
I don't know if my peers, um, I don't want to make it seem like it's just a silo opinion. So if my peers have anything else they feel they want to change or add or key passes.
Well, it's been a full-time job keeping you honest, Jason, as a policy chair. So there's that, but you know.
That's fair.
You've just, I've been really grateful for your leadership and I, I, I like the, as I'm squinting at them, I just like lost the doc on my computer. So I, I like the, the action items that we have. I think they're high level enough so that we can continue to be agile, so that we could, as a committee, identify some policies that could be like bigger ticket policies where there would be more of an impact in terms of implementation and then hold, um, very specific and tailored engagement sessions around those. But I think just being, we could even phrase it to be a little bit more general, because we, we get really valuable information from surveys as well, both qualitative and quantitative data that's informed our decision-making as a committee. So I don't want to discount, um, those different types of engagement, because those have been really important.
I do have one question. Do, I know Dr. Abby Home is no longer with us. Do we have, I guess, who is on point for any statistical significance data pulling?
We have data specialists who remain with us and one of them, Eya Vang, is in the audience. But we, we do have folks who can pull data and help you tell a story about what the data is saying.
Awesome, thank you.
So Jen, were you suggesting that, um, we incorporate, um, survey responses in the policy education and engagement sessions?
Oh, absolutely, we could do those. I just wanted it to be inclusive of other forms of engagement and, and getting feedback from people, not just the sessions.
Yeah, does that work alongside community surveys?
Yeah, because I think there are some people who would prefer to fill out a survey than come to a whole engagement session about a policy. And then I'm the person who wants to come to the whole engagement session instead of filling out the survey, you know? So like there are a lot of different styles and bandwidths in, in our community in terms of how people want to be involved.
Well, thank you all. Anything else?
Just super duper quick, is there any way that in any of the policy, like we can talk about like just having multiple times that we meet, so if parents do want to join, they could join? Like, um, we just have like different sessions that they can attend? That would be more equitable? So like, I know we meet at four thirty, but like we maybe meet at six thirty to meet for those parents who get off of work? Or maybe a nine o'clock meeting for those parents who can make it in the morning? Just thinking.
I think for the policy committee, that's more of a working group.
Okay.
So like parents wouldn't be members, they can certainly observe.
Okay.
But they wouldn't be-
Members, okay.
Members of the policy committee, if that makes sense. Am I thinking of that correctly? I think actually you've landed on, I think that's our only committee. Anything else?
To Director Roper's point, certainly for the engagement sessions, making sure we understand like the-
Yes.
The optimal time for people, I think is really important.
Yeah.
And we'll do that with that key action.
And I think too, um, I do know that you, uh, Director Westmoreland had talked, had spoken with our student board reps and they are also asking for that. They want to continue their service on committees and are asking for times to be, um, inclusive of their schedules.
Exactly. Or the ability to participate asynchronously. So we talked about like putting the policy we're working on in a Google Doc and giving that to the student board reps and that's their copy and they can comment on it. And then we take a look at their comments during our, our monitoring committee meeting. So we're looking at just kind of some different ways of doing things.
That's great. Okay, well, thank you, everybody. I think this was very productive and lots of great ideas. Appreciate it. And that takes us to, um, the next item on our agenda, which is the Fall Data Report. And it's part one, so we can anticipate a part two. I will turn it over to Dr. Mary Perry Reed.
Thank you, Chair Andreessen. Well, tonight, we are beginning our rhythm of quarterly student achievement reporting and, um, we want these reports to be part of our commitment to transparency and to ensuring that our school board, our staff and community have a clear picture of how our students are doing across the system. These quarterly updates will allow us to report progress over time. Some of the achievement data that you'll see is summative, um, and this is important, but we also want to emphasize the importance of growth as well. We want to share, um, how our students are growing, how our improvement strategies are working and where adjustments might be needed, as well as overall how we are doing with the mission that is outlined in Vision 2031. And so I'm very pleased to have Dr. Anne Erdl, who leads our Innovation Design and Learning Team, and Eya Vang, who is of really, um, highly capable, uh, data specialist in our system. Uh, Eya was at Meadowbrook before and now is helping, um, more at the, uh, central office space at the district level. And so very grateful to have Eya on the team. And we hope that, um, these reports will give our school board and community some information about our achievement data, but also spark some conversation and some staff and leader reflection, as well as point to potential instructional or resource alignment. as well as point to potential instructional or resource alignment. So we're really excited about sharing this information with you and we look forward to a time to answer questions and engage in discussion. Thank you, Ann and Iya, for joining at the board table this evening and for all the work that went into putting together this report.
Thank you, Dr. Mary Perry Reed. Good evening, board members. It's nice to, nice to see you at the kickoff of this year. As Dr. Mary Perry Reed mentioned, this is part one. There is a part two to the fall data and then there are many more parts throughout the rest of the year. So get used to our faces, we'll probably be here a lot. We decided, go ahead to the next slide, Natalia, thanks. We, we did decide to break the fall report into two pieces. One, just because of the availability of our MCA data and access data, it's still embargoed. But also, there's, it's sort of a lot for the fall, so we just thought maybe we would, we would ease in. And then this also gives us a, a chance to just kind of at a high level talk about overall how we're thinking about data and what our data strategy is as well. So this slide really kind of illustrates how data flows across our system from classrooms to schools and then to the district office and then back again. And it's meant to be a continuous cycle that not only supports student learning, but also instructional improvement and our strategic decision-making processes. So just really quickly, I'm going to talk about data at each of the levels. At the classroom level, our teachers are encouraged to use collaborative team time. So you'll see collaborative teams on there, really to analyze student assessments and student results and then adjust instruction. Data is used there to ground and inform instructional coaching, some teacher evaluations. And this is where data is the most actionable. It's where teachers can make those real-time decisions about student learning. This is also, we've, you've heard us talk about street data. This would be our street data level. The next sort of stop in the cycle, sorry, you can go back one, is that school-level data. So school leaders are engaging with their building leadership teams regularly on school-wide data. And Iya and the data specialist team and the IDL team are working with our schools to build their use of standardized, systematized protocols and those quarterly data meetings to look, to do those deep dives into what the school data is telling them. Another school-level piece of data is a new principal evaluation model, which is a data, which is also a data-informed way of helping us support our leadership development. And this is something new that Dr. Camthy has been working on, developed in response to new legislation. And then finally, fidelity checks, which are to ensure that data practices are implemented consistently. Finally, we've got that district-level data. And so at the district level, and you've heard us a little bit about this last spring, we've got a few key structures. We've got our Big Data Project, which is in helping us to understand what our data looks like really over a long-range term. And then our Hopkins Instructional Leadership Team, HILT. The Big Data Project has been helping us not only center, or excuse me, centralize our data systems, but also again make the, sort of see what our data is telling us over the course of, in some cases, decades. That's some of the data sets that we're looking at. And then in turn, our data specialist team and our IDL team are working on what are going to be the shared protocols? You know, what does it look like at the high school level versus Harley-Hopkins to really use that data consistently? And then the, this district-level data is typically what we are building our board presentations on. So we aren't necessarily sharing specific school-level data at the board table, but those data reports that we are generating at the board table, we're working with our data team to make sure that they are getting the same thing at the school level and then able to utilize that even at the classroom level as well. So it's a simple diagram, but it really is a model of how we're working to operationalize our data in service to equity and excellence for all of our students. And every level plays a role. There, there, there are complementary roles, but in some cases, pretty different roles. But together, we are creating a system that's grounded in evidence and responsive to student needs. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Iya and she is going to talk about the sets of data that we're going to be looking at tonight. And I know she wanted to start with these norms, which were developed with, with Dr. Abby and our data specialist team, just to sort of ground us and help us as we are looking through what our data is telling us.
Thank you, Ann. Hello, everyone, and thank you for having me here to share some data. So again, like what Dr. Erdl said, we'll begin with looking at our Hopkins data norms because we're going to look at some data. And it's good for us to understand these norms so that we could make sense of the information together. Because when we talk about data, we sometimes come with a lot of feelings too. And so it just helps us to all be on the same page. So the first one is, we stay low on the letter of inference. What that means is that we focus on observing and digesting the data before jumping to assumptions or conclusions. The second one is, we remember that behind the data are people. This one is a very important one for me. Just know that every data point represents a real person in our community, whether that is a student or a staff, family, and should be treated with humanity and respect. We check our biases and assumptions. We acknowledge our biases, especially confirmation bias, and work to prevent them from distorting our data interpretation. We don't let perfect get in the way of progress. We use data, even if it's imperfect, to make informed decision while giving grace as systems and practices improve. And then we know that how data are presented matters. So we present data responsibly, avoiding misleading interpretation with statistics, correlation, or percentages. So as we talk about the data, just keep these norms in mind.
So the first. We could end here.
The first data set that we're going to explore is the internal graduation rates. And then we'll talk about ACT and then AP data. So for our graduation rates, you've seen this slide. Here's a quick recap of the graduation rates we shared at the end of the school year. So in the June school board meeting, you are familiar with this slide. According to MDE calculations, the graduation rate for the 2023-2024 school year was 85.6%. 9.2% of students are continuing, 4% are unknown, and 1.2% dropped out. MDE reported a total of 374 students graduating from Hopkins that year. I believe the Department of Education calculates graduation rates based on when students begin ninth grade. So the data you see here is a four-year period. And so let's move on. And then apologies, but just making sure that the state was 84.2% and Hopkins was 84.6%. So it's a little bit higher than the state. And then here is a recap. Dr. Erdl, feel free to jump in. But here's a recap of key findings, current actions, and next steps to help us better understand and improve graduation rates. One area for further exploration is how the state classified graduates and how our internal coding in Infinite Campus, which is our student information database, aligns with those classifications. So reviewing these practices will help identify gaps and strengthen the accuracy of our graduation reporting. Another important takeaway is the need for consistent and accurate data entry in Infinite Campus. And then moving forward, we'll focus on strength needs, communication, and family engagement, holding regular data meetings to identify and support students. This could look like a credit status checks, right? Implementing those after each term and then also family engagement. Anything to add? Okay.
Next slide.
All right, so I had a lot of fun with this. In reviewing the graduation coding process in Infinite Campus, we have found it to be very complex with multiple layers. The two graphs I wanted to present represent projected 2025 graduation rates. We are not going to get these graduation rates from MDE until the next spring. And so we're just going ahead and trying to see where the gaps are. So you'll see there are two graph, two graphs. The first graph on your left shows a 79.3% rate. This data is, represent all of the students who are enrolled in that 12th grade cohort during that year. So their last year, their senior year. And includes all students who enrolled, whether they only attended for a while or whether they did not finish with us, is the total number of students who enrolled in that year. And the second graph shows a 89% rate if we exclude students who moved, transferred, or were dropped. So the graph to your left is all of the students who have enrolled as seniors during '24, '25. And you'll see that 9.8% is continuing and the 10.8% are students who are either, they're enrolled and that they dropped or they're only here for a few days. We still have enrollment status from them. Or if they transfer, or they had attendance drop, which is a 15-day consecutive drop. So yes. So you see two different graduation rate. I don't know if VDU is a part of our virtual school, is a part of that MDE calculation, I believe it is. But I thought it was interesting to see also VDU 12th grade just by themselves. And you'll see that in reviewing the graduation coding process in Infinite Campus, we also found that it was also complex. And so when including all 12 graders who enrolled that year, the 12th grade cohort shows a 50% graduation rate on the left graph, the rate increases to 69.5%, 0.4% if we exclude students who dropped, moved, or transferred. So these differences highlight the layer nature of, the complex layer nature of graduation rates. A recommended next step is to analyze outcomes by student cohorts. For example, how many students started at Hopkins in ninth grade and graduated from Hopkins High School or Virtual A D U? How many began in kindergarten and graduated from Hopkins? And then also, how many enter in secondary, like during middle school? And also graduate, right? I think those three data points would really tell us a lot more. At this point, I don't have access to those calendar years. So when I do, we'll analyze that data and see what that looks like. Right, the next.
Could I just ask a question? When you say dropped, what does that mean?
Yep, so when I, in our Infinite Campus Student Information Database, we have something called a data field called End Status. And so a 40 means, give me a second. For example, a 40 will mean they enrolled the last day, but they may not graduate. If they had a code of an eight, it means they graduated. 20 mean transferred, right? So different codes mean different end status for that student. And so drop would be if they had like a 15-day drop. Then the end status is a 50-day drop. Yep, so it's just really based on those codes. And it's not even based on like what, we're, we're not looking at the student and finding out exactly what happened. I'm just pulling that raw data right there.
So you mean.
And I think just to emphasize why that matters is, well, first of all, who, who's entering those codes is really, really important. And then the consistency of practice because that, that is what gets reported to the state. And that's the only way we have to look at our rates using Infinite Campus is based on those codes. And so this is another area that we are working with our high school, but really all of our schools, to build those consistent data entry practices so that we can be really confident that, you know, when some, when there is a code eight entered, that we, we all know what a code eight means and that it's consistent across all of our schools.
Yeah, and in that database, it also has a graduation or a diploma date. And we can also pull that and make sure that those two spreadsheet, when we pull, match each other.
And I just want to clarify that the 15-day drop, this is, this refers to a state statute that mandates that we drop, that the school system drops a student who is absent 15 consecutive days.
Thank you.
All right, the next set of data is on ACT. This spring, Hopkins Public Schools continues its commitment to college readiness through strong ACT participation. So you'll see here that 529 students participated in the ACT assessment in spring 2025. 85.8% took it once and then 13.2% of students took it twice. And then we do have a few numbers of students who also took it three times or four more times. And then here's the breakdown by ACT participation by race and ethnicity. So you'll see here, 49.6% of the students who took, participated in the test identify as Caucasian and white. 27.5% African-American Black students. 3.8% Asian, 2 or more percent racist, 8.2. And then there were a few unknown or other as well. Compared to the state averages reported by ACT, so class of 2024, Hopkins matched the state's composite score of 20.7. A higher percentage of Hopkins students met the English reading and science benchmarks, while a smaller percentage met the math benchmark. So on this graph right here, the darker blue is Hopkins, the lighter is Minnesota. And you'll see that the student who participated that year, there's scores higher, there's a higher percentage of them meeting the benchmark compared to the state. All right, by race and ethnicity, for this one, white Caucasian students had the highest average ACT composite score at 23.6, whereas African-American Black students had the lowest at 17.1. So these are the average ACT composite score by race for our students who participated in ACT testing. All right, to meet the English benchmark for the ACT, students need a score of 18. The graph shows that 82.2% of white Caucasian students who took the ACT met this benchmark, which means that they had a score of 18 or higher. This racial group had the highest percentage of meeting the benchmark, while Black African-American students had the lowest percentage meeting the English benchmark. If we look at reading, it is similar. To meet the reading benchmark, students need a score of 22 or higher. The graph shows that 69% of white Caucasian students who took the ACT met this benchmark, the highest percentage again, while Black African-American students had the lowest percentage meeting the reading benchmark. And then to meet the math benchmark, students must score at least 22 on the ACT. According to the graph, so based on the graph, 54.8% of white Caucasian students met this benchmark, while only 13.7% of Black African-American students reach it. This represents a significant disparity for math and is also very similar to science as well. So to meet the science benchmark, you can go to the next one, Natalia. To meet the science benchmark, students must score at least 23 or higher. And then here you'll see 60.7% of white Caucasian students met this benchmark. And then only 13.7% of Black African-American students reach it. So this also represents a significant disparity.
Chair Andreessen, should we hold questions for the end? Or can we do it as we talk, as they talk?
What is your preference?
Either.
Yeah.
Okay, so, can I ask a question then? So obviously, that disparity is stark and frankly, to me, unacceptable. So what's our plan for closing that?
Well, I think the, the most important, well, not the most important, an important first step is to acknowledge that that disparity is there. And then because ACT is what we would consider sort of this more summative satellite-level data, I think we have to dig into a few things, one, one of which is probably reviewing our programs. Even though these are high school students, it's reflective of students who have been in our system, we presume, for a number of years. And so this, I think, is one of the critical areas that our program review has to address. And as you know, Elsa came and talked about math last year. We're looking at math at the secondary level starting this year and then also English Language Arts and Reading. So I think program review is a critical component because these results don't reflect where we would like to see our students. I think the other thing that this nods to though is really more, I guess, pedagogical in nature in the sense that, you know, I, I believe, and I think this deserves further research, that we likely have some students who are accessing ACT support structures and other students who aren't. And so I think we would also want to examine other contributing factors like that to help us discern what is going on. But then also, what, what are the interventions that we can provide as a school system that maybe some families are accessing on their own, but other families aren't for, for a variety of reasons? So I think, you know, I think it's, it's probably a multifaceted, multi-pronged approach. There are certainly things programmatically that we can and should be. There are certainly things programmatically that we can and should be looking at for improvement. But I think there are probably also some, um, sort of other barriers that we certainly can influence, but, um, definitely need further study and investigation.
I'd like to add to that, um, thank you, Dr. Erdl. So two things, one, Dr. Kuhl is working on a structure for teachers who teach English, math, science, and social studies to embed about ten minutes or like a, um, a small amount of time every day so that students can engage in ACT prep, which they can access for free through Maya Learning, which is the college and career readiness platform. So that is something that, um, we're going to be incorporating this year. And then I do think that, um, we can host a data review session with our math specialist and with our math teachers so that they themselves can see how students are doing on the math component of the ACT and start to put together some support strategies for students who are in their math classes. But we also need to identify students who, because this test is, um, taken in October or in April or both.
I think it's, it's offered multiple times.
So if there are students who are not in math all year, right? Then which students are taking the ACT test during that semester? Or which, yeah, which students are taking the ACT test but are not enrolled in math at that time? And how do we identify and support those students? So I think a multi-pronged approach is very important here.
Um, also, do we know which of our students are taking this? Are they all are now, were they juniors? Is this?
Yes, majority are juniors.
Yeah, so-
There were a few, a few tenth graders, a few twelfth graders as well.
Okay, um, so one of the things I, I have context around these scores because I have a junior who took this test at that time that we're looking at. And I can also speak to the disparities, um, which I also feel are not where we want to be as a system. And yet, I know that my child was educated, um, underneath our much more segregated enrichment program than we currently are practicing. So I feel like we are looking at data that is reflecting our past practices here in the district. And I can tell you by looking at the programming that my child was in, I would expect these results, so.
To put more plainly, right, like when our black students are mostly excluded from access to rigorous math instruction, then they don't have the opportunity to advance and excel in ways that other students may have that opportunity.
Yes.
Clarifying question, so if I look at this, these data points, not, um, and obviously, thank you, there's quite a bit. So if I look at the ones that, I mean, we could just take math, for instance, and shows the thirteen point seven. Do we know if the thirteen point seven percent of the black students were taking advanced placement? Or have we met? No, probably is inappropriate. I guess, how do you identify a volunteer who could say what that particular, that thirteen percent were doing? That the, obviously, uh, the six, the, you know, rough math, I would say the forty percent
Yeah.
weren't doing? And so the question I'm wondering is, were those black students in advanced placement? Or were they using Maya Learning a little bit more? I think I just don't have an, obviously, to Director Zhao's point, it is stark, um, difference to see compared to everybody else. And obviously, I know, you know, this is not reflective as of today of like the rigorous math. But I also know that the rollout at the middle school for North was kind of not great from the math perspective. And if you want to say emails, those were emails that I did see. But it seemed like not just, I mean, I couldn't identify whether or not the parent was black, white, or how they identified, but I could definitely tell there were a lot of parents who were frustrated. I got a lot of frustrated parents from North who thought their children were on a trajectory to be able to take. So I think there's multiple variables that I don't understand of whether or not, I think the main thing I'm trying to understand is the thirteen point seven, what were they doing? And nothing to cast a spurge into the remaining population. But what were they doing where if you look at people who identify as white? Fifty-four point eight, so then what were the six percent that, you know, were doing?
That's really interesting, you know, what we could probably do is look at, because we know, we do, we know who these kids are. We actually probably could look at, for example, which math class, or which math classes had they taken? Just even in the context of their high school years. And we, and that might be an interesting, um, data point. I don't know if it would give us causal data, but it would at least, um, show us, you know, do we see any trends with students who by the eleventh grade have taken X math class or Y math class? We could, I think we could start to tease that apart quite a bit, actually.
Sure, thanks.
Chair Andreessen.
Yes.
Um, might a data point in the future include the percent of, I know you said a few tenth graders and a few twelfth graders, but typically, this ACT is geared at juniors, correct? Would we be able to see, say, what percentage of juniors took that test? Because that's something that-
The numbers are really pretty small, but we could definitely disaggregate that in the future, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
So is that different than the participation rate that we have at the beginning?
The participation rate is any student who took the test that year. So it encompasses all ten, eleventh, and twelfth.
Okay, thanks. Um, and I did too, just wanted to know, um, if we're breaking it out by race, ethnicity, is there a way to include our Native American students as well? Or was that not significant enough?
It was a very small number, so we didn't want to include it.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Same with our American Indian students.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the last data set we'll look at is advanced placement courses. Um, so in spring twenty twenty-four, eight hundred eighty-three tests were taken. Um, but this year, one thousand one hundred sixty-six tests was taken. So this is a thirty-two percent increase. And then last year, five hundred fifty-eight students participated. And then, oh, sorry, in twenty twenty-four, and then this past year was seven hundred and five students. So there was a significant increase, twenty-six percent of students taking at least one exam. All right, thirty-seven percent of the whole school, so the whole high school took an AP exam. So thirty-seven percent of that student population. Around forty-five to fifty percent of students enrolled in at least one AP class. So this is a very high number of students participating. Forty-five point eight percent of the class of twenty twenty-five took at least one AP exam. And this was a twenty point two increase from last year, and then from twenty twenty-four. Um, and then, and seventy-nine percent of students earned at least one passing AP score, which is also a two percent increase. And then seventy-six percent of all AP exams taken received at least a passing score. And then here is just, um, letting you know that fifteen out of the twenty-two subjects scored above national or state averages for those students. So, um, the course, the subjects are listed on the right. It will do more analysis of it when we get the data as well, so this was reported to us.
Any further questions?
Thank you, I appreciate having this before us, before the, um, the school year starts. And just a side note, I love that we have AP ceramics. Any comments?
Chair Andreessen.
Yes, Director Zhao.
Yes, uh, well, thirty-two percent increase is amazing and actually like miraculous even, I would say. What, what do you attribute it to, right? Like what, I mean, are things just, are we firing on all cylinders? Or, you know, is there a, a change in strategy? I'm just curious, it seems high, in a good way.
I, well, I would answer that I, I think, um, though the participation numbers are rebounding from COVID still. So I, I think part of it is, is that. But I do think that our high school leaders and also the teachers are just really intentional about recruiting students.
Yep.
Um, and, and being very, um, you know, there's, I, I think students have a, a lot of feelings about the, the idea of taking an AP class, especially if they don't, they've never taken one, or they don't know anybody who takes them. So I think our teachers have just done really an outstanding job at making the idea of taking AP accessible and then really working hard to match students who, um, might have an interest in a particular area and really pushing them to try an AP course. You do see sometimes, um, with our AP numbers in the fall, there are some volatility sometimes. We, we register, we try to register a lot of kids into those AP courses, um, to give it a try. And, and sometimes there's a little bit of attrition with that. But I think overall, um, the strategy of, of targeted and really inclusive recruiting has yielded just a, a better participation rate.
Please, please thank the teachers and everybody that's involved with that. Because I think, you know, not only are more people taking it, the scores also increased, right? So we're not just like throwing students at it and, you know, wishing for the best. But their passing, you know, I think there's, it seems like probably millions of dollars for their parents and families. So that's a really, really good story and, uh, you know, that energy, if we apply it to ACT, right, like that's kind of what I'm trying to connect, right? It's like, how can we take that energy, bring it to other score, other things, right? And like, we know how to do it, we just, you know, how do we do it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, I think it also sort of speaks to, um, the underlying things that you don't always see in the data, which are, which could include things like motivation. So if, so, um, students who have invested a lot of time in, in preparation for their AP assessments might have a different attitude about that assessment than students who sort of feel like they have to take the ACT. And so I think, and that's, that's just a, a, a mindset. So those kinds of things, I think we can work with our students and our, um, college and career readiness folks, our counselors to help, um, students see the value in, in kind of all of the assessments that they, that they take.
Yeah, I want to echo what you shared, um, just now, Director Zhao. I think that our students respond to what they see the system values. And there's a lot of marketing efforts that we are engaged in to promote the importance of taking rigorous courses such as AP, C I S. Our students hear about this. Dr. Erdl talked about the promotion of advanced placement opportunities within the high school. And I agree that if we also let our students know in a myriad of ways that taking and doing well on the ACT is important, doing well in math is important. Like how do we increase the, um, attention? The strategic and intentional attention paid to, um, these different course experiences that are important for students.
I'm assuming we have also a racial breakout, since there's a number jump from eight hundred and eighty-three to eleven sixty-six of like, which races are from a percentage taking the AP classes with this percentage jump? Um, and then my second question is, is there a seminar that happens for the freshmen to kind of like, somebody who's already a student? They're not going to really probably listen to an adult, but so another student who's in an AP class kind of gives them like, hey, this is what macroeconomics is like. Because I would be interested to see like, how many black students are in macroeconomics or biology or computer science principles? I'd be very curious about that, but whether or not there's a seminar, and I know Dr. Kuhl is probably working with other counselors to see how they identify students that probably are not going to naturally, you say, yeah, they should be in AP. But people who have like, a gift that, I mean, I feel like every student has a gift, but you know, you would say this child would probably, you know, benefit in AP. And then somebody's talking to them like your future endeavors, because I would imagine freshman years kind of, can you figure it out? Sophomore years, you better hit the ground running, especially if you want to get to the Harvard, Stanford, MIT, and pay half the percentage.
Right, I think, um, Dr., or Director Ross, I think, um, we can work with Mr. Sammler, who is our AP coordinator at the high school, to get a demographic breakdown. We don't have that information tonight, but we can provide that either as a follow-up or we can revisit it when we're back next month. Um, but to your other point about the influence, the peer influence, so, um, actually, one of the things that our big data project studied for us was around, um, college applications. And one of the findings, um, and I don't have it in front of me, so hopefully I don't, um, mess up the details too much. But one of their findings was that, as you noted, peers, of course, are highly influential in even which colleges that students are, are thinking about applying to. And so one of the things that Dr. Mary Perry Reed and I have been working with our big data team on is developing, um, kind of what you described, which is sort of a, a peer ambassadorship role for students so that they can be encouraging their peers, not just around college, but around some of these topics that we've been discussing tonight. Trying AP courses, um, taking the ACT test seriously and how to find study resources and things like that. So that strategy that you alluded to is actually something that we're, um, going to work with Dr. Kuhl on to really identify, um, you know, not, not just who are the students who always are very visible in our system, but who are those students that maybe are a little more behind the scenes, but actually have a lot of social capital with their peers? And, um, and, and leverage those students to be sort of the, um, the, on the ground with their peers and really promoting, uh, the importance of some of these things.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you both.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Uh, so really quick, um, are we also asking the students about their, um, like their ACT scores and processing with them, you know, or like what went wrong? What was, like, what were you, like, what were you thinking, like, what were your struggles with the test? Uh, because I remember when I took the ACT, I guessed on every question. It was cold, I had to catch the bus down to MCTC to take it. I had just lost one of my first friends, like my first funeral ever I have attended for a friend. And so my mind wasn't there, and so I know that my answers wasn't reflected in what I had learned. But I also didn't have anyone process with me either about what were some of the struggles on the, um, on the test that we could maybe, you know, um, you know, talk and support other students with, or kind of just getting some feedback about it. So is that type, is that level of engagement happening with our students to ask them? Maybe what are some of the bigger struggles with the tests and the test questions, maybe?
That's a really good question. I don't, I don't know, um, the answer to that off the top of my head. But I think that's definitely something that we can explore with, uh, Dr. Kuhl and our, our high school counselors. So I think that would be especially, um, if a child already knows that they're going to take it again. Or like that could be an opportunity really to talk to a student about like what, what happened, do a debrief. What might, do you, do you know you can take it again? Here are some strategies that we could try. So I like that idea a lot, and we can talk to our high school staff and see what is in place now and what might be possible.
I think that's incredibly important, Director Roper, because I guess that this idea of self-efficacy, um, a colleague of mine did some research on the impact, he was focusing on black boys, the impact of them seeing like, like bad grades, right, like over and over, negative feedback. And like the experience of getting an ACT score that is not what you hoped for, right? That it does have a psychological impact. And with students who have experienced that throughout their educational journey, having this happen at the end of it, it really impacts their sense of like, what is possible for them? And, and very real, like materially, what is possible for them as well, right? Um, when they leave our schools. And so I think this piece of processing and like really getting at that street data, right? Around like, why did this happen? Um, and helping students understand too, that like you are so much more than this one standardized test, right? Your brilliance is, um, is so much bigger than this, is really important work, so thank you.
Another important point is that many colleges are returning- Another important point is that many colleges are returning to requiring the ACT as part of the admissions process. So I think for a while, our students were like, I don't have to take that, right? I can apply to college and be seen as a competitive candidate without that score. And now, excuse me, now many colleges are returning to that, to requiring that. And so we do need to just emphasize the importance of ACT prep and then really showing up strong on exam day.
Chair Andreessen.
Yes.
I have kind of a, specifically a board question. Can we have, because I know I've experienced the like, we have this great data piece attached as a slideshow to this agenda, and then when we see it again in a quarter, like, trying to go back and find it, and either it's like, either it's still not shared with us or whatever. Can we, since this is a big movement from our partners, something that I think this board should be really proud of, that we are moving in this direction of, of wanting to show this to our community, and I think the district admin and, and all of our staff should be really proud of it. Can we, is it going to be posted on our website? Or at a minimum, can we have a copy of it in a folder for the board? So when, in a quarter or a year, we come back to this, we can be sure that we can see?
Or can it be archived in, on our agenda?
Well, so one thing that you and I are planning on doing is we're going to keep all of our data presentations in this deck. So it, this, I mean, it's going to end up being tons and tons of slides by the end, but they, so at least for this year, for 25, 26, everything that we review with all of you will be in one slide deck. So that's maybe a small help. But as far as any kind of, I don't know, any kind of printout, we're happy to package it as a one pager or a set of handouts, anything that would be helpful and useful, we're very happy to provide.
Okay.
I think.
Perhaps maybe Natalia, if you could look into, like, is there a way to, like, I know in PowerPoint, you can generate PDFs of.
Oh, sure.
And maybe we do that and link that in the agenda, so that it's static? And yet you can still have your presentation being functional.
Absolutely. And, and for future, I mean, as, as you are interacting with our community, if there are sharing structures that would be useful, like a one pager, kind of a reference or something like that, we're happy to provide that too.
Great.
Chair Andreessen.
Yes.
Yeah. For, we're talking about usefulness too. Like, I think in one year, right, on, on this meeting for next year, when you're presenting this, I think it'd be useful to show like, the same data side by side, right? So like, last year, we were 13.7, right? And this year, we're, you know, 20 or 30, you know, higher, I hope, but I expect, I need to be higher. But, you know, so we're, we're closing the gap, we're not there, of course, you know, it takes time to turn the ship and all that. But it would be useful to be, to have that context, to be like, oh yeah, we're improving, that's good. Versus like, going back to a deck, you know, it's hard to do.
Right. And our, our MCA results are set up that way, but we can definitely employ that with our data sets.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for all your time putting this together. Appreciate it.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
And we all have seven minutes for a break before we're back here for our organizational meeting.
Let's fake news, we have six minutes.
Get started on our meeting.
Look at how good we are, we're your favorites. You love us.
Working on my luna.
Oh, is that, like, building capacity?
Have you heard of Elise?
No.
How, how do you know Elise?
Whoa, like that?
No, but with like the.
Oh, with her hand?
Yeah.
Oh, no, she has shown.
Yeah, she, okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm trying to work on it. And that's how we get people back.
That's good.
My daughter's so good.
And it's like, be manic.
I would like to call to order this meeting of the Hopkins Public School Board at 7:02 PM on Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. Thank you all for being here. The first order of business is our organizational meeting that we do at the beginning of each school year, to get some business items out of the way before we can begin. So I would like to seek a approval of tonight's agenda.
So move.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the agenda for our organizational meeting is approved. Our first order of new business is the designation of the official district newspaper. I would like to invite Director Goldati up to the board table, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Mary Peary-Reed.
Thank you, Chair Andreessen. So just for our community members, every year during our organizational meeting at the board table, we do name the official newspaper for the district. And our Director of Communications and Marketing did some research to look into what the pricing structures are, and just to confirm that the Sun Sailor will continue as our official newspaper. Anything you want to add to that, Director Goldati?
I don't think so. I, the, the rates that are currently in the agenda, I believe, are the updated rates. We, they, the Sun Sailor has, has gotten back to us with that information.
A pretty simple designation, unless the board has questions or concerns.
Any questions or concerns? I would just like to comment generally that this is required, and something that school districts have to do is to post things in a local paper. We are lucky that we actually still have a local paper, a lot of districts don't. And so the only thing I am wondering, and we can look into it later, is I often find, because I live in Minnetonka, that the Minnetonka Sun Sailor doesn't necessarily post our Hopkins School stuff. So we might want to be in conversation with them, that actually they need to put it in both the Hopkins and the Minnetonka versions, because technically, more of our district is in the city of Minnetonka.
That's a great point.
So just to remind them of that.
I think that we, I have, I have to verify this, but I, I, I think from the latest, like, physical copies of the paper I've seen, we've, they seem to have merged us with St. Louis Park, which is, which is very different. And that's a, a very different poll from our, where our residents live. So, yeah, I do think we should look into that and make sure that we are in both.
Great. Thank you. So with that, I would look for a motion to designate the Sun Sailor Sun Post Publications as the official newspaper of the Hopkins Public Schools for the 2025-26 school year. I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the, the official district newspaper is designated. Thank you, Director Goldati.
Thanks, Julie.
And next, we will look to the appointment of our legal firm. I will invite Assistant Superintendent Lightfoot to the table and turn it over to Dr. Mary Peary-Reed.
Thank you, Chair Andreessen. Again, this is an annual and standard procedure to approve the legal firm that we use when Dr. Lightfoot, who is also an attorney, needs that thought partnering for our system. So appreciate the expertise that he brings to the legal space, but also, anything you want to add, Dr. Lightfoot, about this designation of Ratwick, Rosack, and Maloney?
Yeah, the only thing I would bring to the board's attention is that as outside counsel, they do provide general information to us. And if necessary, on matters that may require some very specific counsel in specific areas, we do also keep that open as options. So for example, if we have any need for immigration work with staff on H1Bs or other kinds of very particular areas, we will work outside of Ratwick to get that level of expertise if needed. But in general, they are our outside counsel that we go to first for any general needs that we would have.
And is this, sorry, I'm just wondering, is this the, how long have we been using them as our attorneys?
Hmm, I'd have to go back and double check, five or six years now?
Okay. Thank you.
Chair Andreessen?
Yes, Treasurer Heartland.
Thank you for coming here tonight. I imagine that this is a relatively niche specialty to be able to provide the information that a school district needs. But if you say that we've been with this firm for five or six years, how often do we shop for other, either experts or compare the rates of these attorneys with other firms?
We don't necessarily run RFPs. I mean, we certainly could if there was a desire and/or need for direction from the board.
Okay.
Chair Andreessen?
Yes, Director Westmarland.
I think something that I've really appreciated, working with this firm in the monitoring committee for policy questions, during some of the things that we need to consider during closed session at times, is their deep knowledge of our district. And that they, we've worked with Laura for longer than five or six years, is my memory.
Yeah. Laura's been close to about, different firms, but close to about 30-plus years.
Yes. So she had. Yes. So she has a deep knowledge of our district and has helped us with a lot, with various situations over time. And so I just, I think that that's a really important consideration here for retaining their services.
Thank you. Chair Andreessen?
Yes.
Director Contreras would like to add maybe something about this firm also specializing in special education law or?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I know our district, first of all, good evening, everyone. So I know our district encompasses more than students with disabilities and I think that is probably the number one source of lawsuits, if you will, in districts. I was just at a training last week at MDE and because special ed and 504s are so much about laws being followed, I've worked with Laura prior to coming to Hopkins, but she definitely helps lead and guide us in multiple ways and it's whether students are on IEPs or not. It's the 504 plan. They, she is the number one trainer in the state of Minnesota for 504s and IEPs. And unfortunately, many of my colleagues have been to court. I won't name the surrounding districts, but there's more that have been than have not been. And so I think her legal counsel helps to train on the proactive side and guide us when things come up because everything about 504s and for IDEA, everything about 504s and IEPs are legal. So that's just my two cents. So I've been doing this over 20-something years and I think her guidance and teaching has been supportive for us.
Thank you for that context. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Fonda.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. I appreciate all the comments and the fact that I think that administration appreciates working with this firm, which, you know, is a great recommendation for me. So with that, I would look for a motion that the board approves utilization of the legal services as provided through Ratwick, Rosnak, and Maloney, I hope I said that right, at hourly rates as noted above for the 25-26 school year dependent upon the services required, and that the board allow district administration the discretion for the 2025-26 school year to seek other legal counsel and/or utilize a licensed attorney when there is a need to acquire special expertise.
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the legal firm has been appointed. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Lightfoot.
Thank you, Nick.
And now we will go to review of school board policy 253, which is board member compensation and expenses. We need to do this every year, establish our compensation for the school year, and a review of the expenses, which would be for participation in appropriate conventions, conferences, workshops, seminars, and similar meetings. So yeah, I would open it up then to any questions, comments from my board colleagues. We also have here a background in compensation going back to August 2020 when we had a 0% increase in our compensation.
Chair Andreessen, I'm happy to give a little bit, thank you, I'm happy to give a little bit of historical context here. So that 0% increase was, as you can see by the date, in the thick of COVID, when we were not quite sure what our financial situation would be. And then you see the subsequent years, we have a 2% increase, which is aligned more or less with our union, the increase that our teachers have gotten. We have discussed before as a board that we would not feel comfortable going over that, just historically. And another key component that has come up every time we've talked about this since I've been on the board, is that board member compensation is absolutely an equity issue. This is a labor-intensive role. We, you know, I don't even want to do the hourly, what we're compensated hourly if we divide that out. And so that means that historically, board service has only been available to financially privileged people or not, people who are not financially privileged and really make a sacrifice in terms of time and their earning capacity in order to do this work. And so I always advocate for an increase so that we can keep that moving forward. I think there needs to be a much bigger fix, a statewide fix in the conversation around this. Director Roper and I have talked about this before, so that we can really ensure that our school boards are representative of our communities.
Thank you. Anyone else have any?
Chair Andreessen?
Yes.
Yes, I have a comment, I guess. So last year, I voted actually no for this and it occurred to me I didn't explain why. So I, you know, thought I'd like to just talk a little bit about that. So, you know, I think it is true that, you know, from an equity and perspective and from a, you know, amount that we're earning perspective, it's just a token. But, you know, I view it in the kind of context of the historic budget deficit that we're still in and, you know, we don't have the numbers yet, quite yet, but I expect probably, you know, we're going to be in a situation where there's not going to be a lot of resources to go around. And so, you know, controlling what I can control or what we can control is important. And, you know, it is, again, just a token, but it's like if we can control certain expenses, you know, I think that is a worthy message. But I do definitely agree that it's an equity thing, but it's not something that is solvable by just us. So just wanted to explain.
Thank you. So you would be advocating for a zero increase?
Yes.
And if I heard correctly, Director Westmoreland, you would be in favor of a 2% increase?
Correct.
In line with what other staff are seeing in the district?
Thank you, Chair Andreessen. I think, you know, it's important to note that the reason that we have a deficit is a structural underfunding of public education over time. And that is not a problem that we have created as school boards. In fact, we have worked to remedy that. School boards for decades have been working to remedy that. And the fact that we do have a budget deficit means that we have even more work to do as school board members in terms of engagement, in terms of making really hard decisions at the table, which means those decisions need to be well researched. And so that would be an additional argument for the 2% increase.
Chair Andreessen?
Yes, Treasurer Heartland.
Yes, thank you. I mean, I appreciate both of those perspectives. We certainly are. I mean, a school district is not a place that's overflowing with wealth and resources. But I think that it is fairly compelling, this point about how this, the very underfunding of this makes this job even more demanding, both in time and in kind of mental and emotional power that you bring to it, even more demanding. And I think last year, we had a very similar discussion. And the truth is that a 2% increase, we're talking about $121 a person or about $850 for the entire board. So that's, you know, it is of course not nothing. It would be kind of obtuse to call $850 nothing. But as far as the collective efforts of the people on this board, I think that it is more than worth it. And if you use the U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics, use their inflation calculator to say what, the $5,578 stipend that's quoted here as our 2021, as a 2021 stipend, if you run it through their calculator, it says that in for July of 2025, you would need $6,888 to equal that same amount. And so I think by a 2% increase, we'll be at something like $6,150 annually. So we definitely have lost weight as compared to inflation.
Thank you for that context.
Chair Andreessen, can I?
Yes, Director Roper.
Thank you. I wholeheartedly agree with, you know, Director Westmoreland and Treasurer Heartland and also understanding your perspective too as well, directors out about the school board pay. But I do want to emphasize, like I've been emphasizing for a long time, that this is absolutely equity issue. Even talking to folks who have considered running for the school board have definitely declined because of this very issue. They don't have the resources to be able to sustain themselves as a school board member. And the work is very levy, I mean, very heavy. We are, I mean, we are a smaller district, so I know that our pay is smaller, but compared to other districts, we are on a lower scale. And not saying that the money is like, you know, like the main factor, but it is, you know, we do often give up other benefits, you know, of a school board, like a school board, right? Like we look at our professional development and we look at the things that we're needing to sacrifice in order to even make up some of those deficits. I think an investment in us is very key. And also having representation on the board is very critical, especially in our divisive times that we need to think differently about public education and how we're going to structure that for our next generation. So.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? I have to say I, it gives me pause to approve a 2% increase in compensation for the board, in particular, being aware of where our salaries, our compensation, our stipend falls in the budget. And I want to be transparent about that. It does fall in admin services, which we have received direct feedback on from our community that they feel we need to dial back on. I also know that with the historic cuts in the district to administration services, we are, as a board, feeling the pressure to take on more work and responsibilities. And I think that our community needs to be aware of that. In particular, I know a big lift is the upcoming election and Natalia is working really hard to make that happen. And we have had to ask our clerk to step up and do a lot more than has ever been done historically by the school board directly. And so balancing those two very real tensions is what I'm thinking about when we look at this discussion. I also recognize, yes, $800 to show that the community in the district values every person at this table, I think, is more than appropriate. And I'm just sitting with that tension. So that's kind of where I am. And I agree, it is an equity issue. And I think if you are serving well on the board, you really don't have the time or energy to pursue other things. So do we want to just take a, around the table? Do we want to put it to a vote that were, I think what I'm hearing is the majority of the board is for a 2% increase in compensation? Yes?
Should we vote?
Okay. I would also just quickly want to note to support what you said, Director Roper, we as a board are very intentional about keeping our other expenses minimal. And I think that that also needs to be part of the public discourse. We are very conservative about our professional development. We do a lot in-house, which is another thing that the board is taking upon themselves to do our own professional development to save the district money. And so just making sure that the community is aware that we are doing things to save as much money as possible and have cut that budget item from repeatedly. So I would entertain a motion that the board establishes the appropriate compensation for 2025-26. Also, that term life insurance in the amount of $50,000 for each board member be continued. The total cost of the insurance for the seven board members is $525 annually and $75 per person. And there's no increase from 2025 to 20, 2024 through 25, and that we are approving a 2% increase in compensation for the board.
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
The chair votes aye and the motion passes. Thank you all for the discussion. Now we go to authorization of district memberships, 2025 through 26, and I will turn it over to Dr. Mary Perry Reed.
Thank you, Chair Andreessen. So there are currently two memberships for your review. The first is AMSD, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. And what this is, is a board that consists of the superintendent and one board member, sometimes an alternate board member from about 47 metropolitan districts that gather together monthly to review the legislative platform and to engage in professional learning that advances the support that leaders and board members provide their systems. And as you can see, the membership fee increased very slightly to amount to $10,286 for this school year. And the second one is Minnesota School Boards Association, which is the, a key support organization for school board members across the state of Minnesota with the 25-26. Well, we have the 24-25 membership fee listed of $13,317. And do we know if it has increased for the 25-26 school year, Natalia?
That should have been this year, 25-26 membership fee is the one that's highlighted.
Okay, so just the date is incorrect?
Correct.
Thank you. So board members, you can see what the fee is then for this school year and we're correcting the date. And this is a membership that is very specific to inform the quality and support for your roles. I'm not sure if any of you would like to add to the value that being a member of MSBA brings the school board here.
And AMSD to both?
Sure.
Director Ross, are, are you our current AMSD representative?
Yes, I think both of these organizations, I will speak specifically with MSBA, just being able to have those model policies and be able to reach out to MSBA to be able to ask some questions, to be able to ensure that, you know, we have a seat at the table and that they are working legislatively. And I would say same with AMSD. AMSD is very, very good about keeping members apprised of any legislative situations that are coming down that if you're not, you know, watching C-SPAN, sorry, I'm old school, if you're not watching C-SPAN on a regular basis, they are, you know, letting you know. So I think both of these organizations help, are helping out our district as, you know, best as possible. And we do have a seat at the table, which I like.
Thank you.
So I'm for it.
Chair Andreessen?
Yes, Treasure Heartland.
I think last year, knowing that we were going into something of a deficit year, I was a bit skeptical or at least brought up for discussion, you know, are we getting our values worth out of these organizations? And have kept that in mind all through the previous school year. And I think that, um, my answer to my own question from a year ago is yes, that we absolutely have gotten the value out of having a professional network and having access to the professional network, just like, um, Vice Chair Ross said. Especially in times like this where there are so many changes, where so many districts are in a deficit, where we're seeing, the changes aren't just coming from our state level. They need to be kind of interpreted what's coming from our federal level. And that to take away this network would increase the burden enormously on us and the, and, and district admin and staff and would advocate for keeping both of these memberships.
Thank you. Um, I, I have to agree, Treasure Heartland, I too was very much on the fence about the value. And have found myself increasingly, in particular, reaching out to MSBA as, um, the, the need to, um, answer community questions in a legal and appropriate way. Um, as those are becoming more and more frequent and more and more, um, in-depth. Um, I found myself utilizing MSBA a lot this year and really value that they are there and a partner and are able to guide us as board members so that we are meeting state statute and are continuing to run, um, the school board in best practices. So I would say I am in favor too of continuing both these memberships. All right, so with that, I would look for a motion that the board authorize continued memberships in AMSD and MSBA for the 2025-26 school year.
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the motion passes. And with that, we have completed our organizational meeting. So I would, um, look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and we are adjourned at seven thirty-three P M. And we get to move right in.
Not for long.
To the next meeting. We're gonna call to order. Once I get it pulled up. Okay, so I call to order this meeting of Hopkins Public School Board uh, for Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven thirty-three P M. So welcome. Thank you all for being here, um, for tuning in. If you're here online, we are coming right off of our organizational meeting, which we do, um, to establish, um, different things that need to be established before the school year starts. Um, our first order of business, um, usually in our, um, meetings is our open agenda, which has a public comment section. Do we have any voicemails or comment cards for this evening? Great, thank you Natalia. Thank you. Thank you, Direc- Director Westmoreland. I am going to trying to find my open meeting. Here we go. Um, so welcome, thank you. The Hopkins School Board believes that hearing from our community members is crucial for implementing Vision 2031. There are several ways besides, um, showing up here for public comment that you can contact the school board. Um, you could do so via email at school-board@hopkinschools.org. Um, on the board, on the school board page on the district website, you can find a contact the board form and email the entire board. And so at board meetings, public comment will be received both in person and through voicemail. We do not have any voicemails this evening. And we do host two public comment sections. We will not need our second one. This one is thirty minutes long. Um, we have one comment card, so we will not need the full thirty minutes. And here are the guidelines for public comment. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Public comment is for input only. Members of the school board will not respond directly to public comments that are made at this meeting. No specific action will be taken at this meeting in response to comments that are made or issues that are raised during the public comment period related, um, to, or that, um, prioritize items, um, on the agenda. If the board determines that action is appropriate, the action will occur at a future board meeting. If you have left your contact information on the comment card, a district representative may follow up with you after the meeting. I will recognize one speaker at a time. Only those speakers who are recognized will be permitted to speak. Individuals who interfere with or interrupt speakers, the board, or the proceedings may be asked to leave. Personal attacks on any individual, including any other speaker during the public comment session are unacceptable as are obscenities or profanity. Persistence in making such comments will end the individual's opportunity to address the board and may result in the individual being directed to leave. I will rule out of order any statement that would violate state or federal law, school board policy, or the privacy rights of an individual. Minnesota's open meeting law prohibits the discussion of private educational data during an open meeting. Accordingly, during the public comment session, no person may discuss private educational data on an identifiable student. The open meeting law also requires the board to close a meeting for preliminary consideration of allegations against an employee. Accordingly, community members who have concerns about an employee or want to file a complaint or allegations against an employee are encouraged to contact the superintendent. We ask you not to name any employee by name during your comments. Repeated violations of these time, place, and manner restrictions may also lead to the meeting being briefly recessed. Community members will have an opportunity to be heard within the limits of the law and subject to the time, place, and manner restrictions above. Thank you for participating in public comment this evening. And I would like to invite Rachel Meneg- Meneghini, and please correct my pronunciation, um, up to the table, to speak about transportation and childcare. Thank you for being here this evening.
Okay, if I sit here with the sunlight?
Sure. Oh, sure. Yes. They don't go down?
Appreciate it. Hello, uh, my name is Rachel Meneghini and I am a parent of a student, an elementary school student in a newly designated no bus zone. We applied a month and a half ago to the busing lottery and we're told we would know if we won that lottery last Friday, the fifteenth. We are four days later and two weeks from the start of school and I still have no answer about that busing lottery. Furthermore, up until yesterday, we were on the waitlist for Kids &amp; Co. childcare. There was no movement on the waitlist for three months. Forty-five of my friends are still on the waitlist at Glen Lake. Last year, we were on the waitlist as well until October. Parents are told to be patient, but where is the accountability at the district level? Why have waitlists and lack of information become the new norm? I'm here to point out that childcare and transportation are interconnected. Children cannot be dismissed at two-ten in the afternoon without knowing that there'll be an increased need for childcare. Children in no bus zones should be given priority into Kids &amp; Company and more staff need to be hired. The school board should also make great effort to team up with city governments to install crosswalks with traffic signals and install sidewalks for our youngest students who are being asked to walk home alone. Frustration is growing amongst parents and these chronic issues do not shine well on the district. If nothing changes, my family and many other families will be in the exact same situation again next year. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
So that concludes our public comment section of open agenda and we move to the superintendent report. Dr. Mary Perry Reed.
Thank you, Chair Andreessen. Uh, so I want to, um, offer a greeting to school board members, colleagues, and staff in the audience and community members. And welcome everyone to the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I also want to begin with a spirit of celebration and connection. On the screen, you'll see a glimpse of how Hopkins showed up this summer at Twin Cities Pride and also at the Raspberry Festival Parade. These moments matter because they do remind us that Hopkins schools don't only exist inside classrooms. We're a community and wherever Hopkins schools are, our families and staff and students are as well. And so it was really fun to be in these spaces this summer. I also want to make sure that a sense of belonging, joy, and visibility is reinforced throughout the school year and also reinforced throughout the superintendent and student board rep reports this school year. I hope that you can see whether in classrooms or in celebrations or behind the scenes, our work really is all about making sure students are achieving and families, as well as staff, know they are seen, supported, and set up for a brilliant future. I also want to take this time at our first board meeting to reference Vision 2031. And just to remind everyone that having a bold vision is very critical in public schools today. And this is because our status quo system has not effectively served each student. Public schools have a long history of varied and predictable outcomes informed by student demographics, which are factors outside of students' control, including race and family income. And Vision 2031 really calls for us to think differently about the ingredients that will allow every student to be successful. Vision 2031 is a thirteen-year vision launched in two thousand eighteen because that's how long students are with us if they begin in kindergarten and then graduate as Hopkins Royals. On this slide, you can see our success indicators, which include continuing to be a beacon of innovation across the state as well as a destination district for employees and families, hiring intentionally so that by 2031, our staff demographics are reflective of our student demographics, ensuring a hundred percent of our graduates have a college or career placement after high school that is well-aligned with their strengths and talents, and also eliminating racial and income predictability from our student outcomes. Our vision also includes a profile of a Hopkins graduate, six core values, and a strategic plan with deliverables in three focus areas, which include teaching and learning, culture, and operations. And while there is no perfect organization and we have work to do, certainly, we heard a parent, um, Rachel speak earlier to some of the ways her cha- her family is currently challenged. We do have a strong roadmap in our vision, in our strategic plan, that spells out what success looks like. And I'm grateful to our community for the hundreds of folks who contributed to this vision and strategic plan. I want to shout out a couple of Xingxing parents who invested a great deal into organizing our Chinese immersion communities' participation in the Raspberry Parade last month. What a great group of Xingxing supporters and our very own board member, Jiming Zhao, dressed up, it's really not funny, it's very service-oriented.
It's a little funny.
Is it? Okay. So, uh, Director Zhao dressed up as a royal panda for the big day. Also spotted at the Raspberry Parade was new Alice Smith principal, Sabrina Schmidtky, our marching band, and many athletic and extracurricular programs who were showcasing their opportunities for students. This summer, we had thousands of students enrolled in summer programming from Kids &amp; Co. to Camp Royal to Extended School Year to Freedom School and more. Our students had a lot of unique opportunities to be entrepreneurs, engage in enrichment, and practice leadership. When I visited Kids &amp; Co. at Glen Lake, they were proud of the weekly student-designed newsletter sent to parents and caregivers. Reading these student-written articles is very joyful. So for example, on the left, the submission titled Basketball and Adventure Clubs begins with, "This week in the dock and the lake, clubs were all chaos. In the lake, the basketball club was lining up to shoot hoops. They were doing free throws. It was pure chaos." "In the dock, adventure club was happening. Everyone was discussing how to make characters. After that, they were thinking about playing games." So, um, gotta check out those student-designed newsletters. Also check out the kiddos having fun in Kids &amp; Co., but also early childhood had a ton of summer programming this summer. And believe it or not, if you're in Kids &amp; Co., you could join a Barbie-themed playroom and stay there all day. All of the contents in the playroom were donated by parents, including dollhouses, pink tryon clothes and shoes. It was a total dream space. And then on the left, you'll see Ms. Kimberly with a group of rising kindergartners who spent their summer at Alice Smith. "In the beginning of the summer, our Hopkins Clay Crushers just wrapped up their twentieth season, a huge milestone for one of the most consistent and hard-working teams in our athletic programs. Clay target competition is all about discipline, focus, and precision. The sport demands steady nerves, sharp concentration, and countless hours of practice. This team has a lot of participants and some of the student athletes who demonstrated extra noteworthy performance are Andrew Sorheim, Will Tuftow, Ashley Sarvey, Sawyer Nixon, Ben Holicky, Max Quinn, and Alex Wolf. Also gratitude to Coach Mark Ze- Mark Zek, who is a former Hopkins High School teacher who, um, retired a couple of years ago and has steadily coached this team over the years. In mid-July, I attended the annual regional mayors and superintendents meeting with Mayor Hanlon from Hopkins and Mayor Wiersum from Minnetonka. The guest speaker was Mary Riessi, who is a senior leader at the XQ Institute and also someone I sit with on the Education Evolving Board. Mary talked to mayors and superintendents about ensuring that our high schools are places that offer students competency-based, relevant interdisciplinary learning that effectively prepare students for real-world environments. During her presentation, Mary referred to a report titled Lives, Economies, Nations: High School is the Future of Everything. This report compares and contrasts the traditional high school model, which is outdated, with the design features found in future forward schools. If you review the compare and contrast chart on this slide, you'll find examples that place Hopkins on the right path. To contribute to the discussion, I shared the work that we have done with Ford NGL to set the stage for transformation at our own high school. And we hope to get you an update on a potential partnership with Ford NGL at our September nine board meeting. This November, Hopkins voters will decide on two important school funding measures that directly support our students and community. In June, our school board approved Hopkins, putting the following two questions on the November ballot. Question one is a bond referendum. If approved, this investment will fund safety and security upgrades to all of our schools, ADA regulatory improvements, single-user restrooms at our high school and other schools, renovations to our high school's career and technical education, or C T- renovations to our high school's career and technical education, or CTE, learning spaces, playground and parking lot updates, enhancements to learning and athletic spaces across the system and more. If approved, this investment will cost the average homeowner about $7 per month. Question number two on the ballot will be a capital projects levy, which you might see also referred to as CPL. Capital projects levy or CPL renewal. This renewal will not increase taxes for homeowners, but if approved, will continue to provide critical funding for technology, for cybersecurity infrastructure improvements, as well as to procure necessary curriculum and also band instruments. Together, these measures will ensure that Hopkins students will continue to learn in safe, accessible and future-ready spaces while we remain fiscally responsible. I do want to publicly recognize all of the time that many groups are investing in ensuring our community is well-informed and has what they need to participate in the November election. These groups include our amazing communications and marketing team, a group of about 10 parents who have volunteered in this, in the Vote Yes Parent effort, members of our Hopkins Education Association, or HEA, as well as Natalia, Christina and Andrew, a team of three colleagues who are prepping for this November's election. So thanks to those groups and actually many other individuals who have done a lot to prepare us for this time. And finally, I just want to conclude, we're not going to have a department or school spotlight this evening, but school board members, if you remember last year, embedded at the end of each superintendent report was an opportunity for one of our school principals to come and talk about the school that they serve and how they are advancing student achievement and positive school-wide culture in all of those spaces. And so what I'm going to do this year is turn the focus to our departments. So each of our department leaders will have an opportunity to come to the board table and talk about what each of the district departments are in our system, who sits in those departments and what are some of the key functions of these departments. But we will also be able to have a chance to hear from our co-leadership team at the high school and then our new principal at Alice Smith Elementary. So I just wanted to provide a preview of what those department and a few school spotlights will look like for upcoming superintendent reports. And I think I'm done. With that, I could take questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any comments or questions?
Dr. Mary, well, Chair Andreessen, can I ask a quick question? Thank you so much, Dr. Mary Perry-Reed, for that thoughtful, you know, superintendent report and just all the work you're doing over the summer to ensure our school is ready for this school year. A quick question about the two questions for the levy. So when we talk about per parent community, are they sending out like cards about like the levy or are they helping people, like are they holding like informational sessions in community about it or like some listening sessions or maybe some graphics that we could share online about the levy and just giving folks more information about it?
Yeah, so several things. So our communications and marketing team has, is putting the finishing touches on a referendum webpage, which will have all things bond referendum and CPL renewal. I, as the superintendent, will be out and about in the community and also at all of our school staff meetings, ensuring that staff and parents are well-informed. We also have a parent group that is organizing right now, who will show up at various events, including school open houses and events out in the community, parent-to-parent, talking about the referendum and asking for positive support. And we have members of the Hopkins Education Association, our teacher union, who are saying we would also like to help and they may be more teacher-facing, but through a multi-pronged effort, we're hoping to take the next two months to make sure that our community is well-informed. Does that answer your question?
Yes, that does. Thank you.
Chair Andreessen.
Yes, Director Westmoreland.
Dr. Mary Perry-Reed, I remember the last time that we had a referendum that coincided with a school board election, you gave a presentation before the League of Women Voters Forum, and that was really helpful for our community. I'm wondering if there are plans to do something similar this time.
Sure. Is that the right answer? You know, we talked about the
Yes, we did.
The memory issue. Yes, we would love to. So I think what would be really helpful is if our school board and other members of our community have ideas, specific ideas of events, then we'll just put together, we already have a draft calendar of some events, we'll just add them to that calendar and we'll show up. You know, it's going to be a really, a very intentionally intense two months because we do want to really get out there and make sure that people have access to information, can ask questions and can really contemplate what this means to our community.
That's great. Thank you.
So the answer is yes.
Great.
Although I don't remember that specific presentation.
It was very good.
That's okay.
And my memory is that we embedded it in the website, like just that part of it.
Sure.
So that could be, you know, it could be used for that purpose too.
For sure.
That folks who don't watch the forum could just watch that part.
Absolutely.
And this is, and it's just specific to Hopkins, right? It's not any like in like Minnetonka District or anything like that. It's just only Hopkins.
Hopkins School District.
Hopkins School District. There are other districts going out for referendums, but this is just about Hopkins Public Schools.
Okay.
Within the seven municipalities that we serve.
Okay, so that's what I was asking. So basically, so it would be like in Eden Prairie, it would be over in Hopkins, Minnetonka. Okay.
Yeah, so that's a really good question. So for our community, as a school district, we serve all of Hopkins, 2/3rds of Minnetonka, half of Golden Valley and then small portions of Eden Prairie, Edina, Plymouth and St. Louis Park. So we would be engaging with community members in the Hopkins attendance areas for all of those seven cities. Makes sense?
Any other comments or questions? Thank you for that. I enjoyed seeing photos of the summer celebrations. So thank you for including that. So then we will move on to approval of tonight's agenda. I would look for a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the agenda is approved. We then move to the consent calendar. This is a, the purpose of this item is to provide the board with information considered to be more routine in nature. If the board deems an item to be necessary for additional discussion, a motion will be made to move the item to new business. The recommendation is that the board approves the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the consent calendar is approved. And that takes us to the treasurer's report. Treasurer Hartland.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chair Andreessen. Good evening, everybody. It is a privilege to be back here with you tonight as we kick off another school year. And I think it is important to acknowledge that while, yes, it is a very exciting new beginning, that many people in our community will be starting the school year carrying the weight of their various challenges and worries, and many of those challenges are related to the systems that we operate in. And one example is that this board, the Hopkins Legislative Action Coalition, and then the district at large, has been wrestling with this summer is the federal administration announcing the freezing of $6.8 billion in federal funds to public education. That money would be used for before and after-school programming, teacher development, STEM education, career and college counseling, and adult education and literacy programs. And so the impact to our district, if such a freeze actually happens, is somewhere between $700,000 and $1.25 million. Just as a reminder, our budget here in the district is approximately $150 million. And the impact to the state of Minnesota at large is closer to $70 million. And so that would be a gap that either our state would have to close or the districts would have to eat and somehow cover in other ways. Fortunately, on July 14, Minnesota's Attorney General Keith Ellison joined a coalition of 23 other states to sue, arguing that this freeze is unconstitutional. This case is currently in process, and the federal government has authorized the release of some of those funds. And so that's just one of several impending changes that could impact our district. Another is the passage of the most recent budget bill, which has large cuts to Medicaid. And our district does get money from Medicaid for certain services that we provide to students, and cuts there will certainly impact us. And so this comes at a time when we need to be finding ways to actually reduce burden on teachers and district staff, and yet this uncertainty is creating more worry and more work. We in the district are fortunate to have support from many resources, including the Minnesota Department of Education, the various professional organizations we discussed in our organizational meeting just a moment ago, Hopkins Legislative Action Coalition, and some deep partnerships with our local representatives. So we will keep monitoring these legislative changes and assess the impacts to our district and then work to accommodate or counteract them whenever possible. So moving on to the expense report, remember that the summer is actually a very busy time in the district. Maybe it doesn't seem that way because students are typically home, but remember that we provide some form of school or camp to thousands of students. We have teachers working and attending professional development. We are securing supplies and equipment for the upcoming year. We're hiring and training people. We are fixing, cleaning and updating our buildings and grounds. And so therefore, you will see a greater than average amount of line items for June and July. We did still have transportation costs from the last month of the school year, and those expenses totaled $393,227. We paid Blake School, a private school within our district boundaries, $50,560 to support their curriculum with books and other materials as required by state statute. We paid $20,321 to Project SOAR, which is a program our district participates in to support the continuing education of our community's adults with disabilities. We paid $916,392 for our hardware lease agreement with Apple, for our district's Apple devices and the support for them. We paid the exact same the last two years for these devices and have that same contracted rate for the next year. We paid $262,797 to CDW LLC. That's a company that provides a lot of our behind-the-scenes IT support. So if you think about how many thousands of devices we have, how many different applications we use and all the storage and networking we need, this service helps all of that work together and it's much more cost and time efficient than having to install and manage all of these components in-house. We paid $170,480 to Construction Results Group as part of a project to upgrade the ventilation at the high school. And whenever an expenditure description says APP, like it does for this one, it says HHS APP 2, that does mean application. And that's because, especially for our long-term facilities maintenance, there is a lot of bureaucracy and requirements around the construction work in the schools. And so we do actually have to apply to the state of Minnesota to be able to use some of our funds. And in that, we provide the scope of work and how much we're paying for labor and materials. And so that abbreviation APP appears a lot in this expense report. And so anytime you see that, it's a highly regulated expense, and we have a whole paperwork trail around it that's filed with the state. We paid $13,305 to clean up storm damage at our various sites. We paid $1.052 million to McPhillips Brothers Roofing Company for roof work that was done at the high school in the spring. That is another one of those expenses with the whole application and tons of documentation attached to it. We paid $22,261 for ACT testing, $58,210 for AP exams, and $108,940 to Normandale for the tuition for all of our students who took PSEO classes there in the spring. And so just a reminder that in this report, I always try to highlight notable expenses and provide some answers you might need to better understand the expense report when you look at it. So as always, I mean, I could, we could do this for another hour and we wouldn't hit every expense that was in our list. So if you still have a question about any of them, happy to take them at the table or via email. And with that, I move that we approve total disbursements in the amount of $13,289,183.79 for the period of June 1, 2025 to July 31, 2025.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the treasurer's report is accepted. Thank you, Treasurer Hartland. Now we will go to our first item of new business, which is the Strong School Start Update. I'm very excited for this. I think there is a whole suite of people coming to the table, so I will turn it over to Dr. Mary Perry-Reed.
Thank you, Chair Andreessen. So board members and community members, we do have a number of presenters approaching the board table, and I'll provide a framing for what this agenda item is all about. So every year, a successful first day of school depends on months of careful coordination across our entire district. And to support this, we bring together representatives from all core departments for what we call our Strong School Start Meetings. These monthly meetings provide a structured space for transportation, nutrition services, technology, teaching and learning, facilities, human resources and other critical teams to share updates and anticipate potential challenges and coordinate solutions. Our goal is to ensure that every system and service is ready to support our students, families and staff from the first day, and we want to do this work carefully by aligning our work. So this evening, we do have quite a bit of information for you, and I think what we're going to do is have our presenters just go in order of, Natalia, do you want to go to the next slide? I think we have an order of presenters. So we'll go in this order and then maybe, presenters, you can make a note of who's following you and introduce that next person. And I appreciate all of the work that are these leaders that you see here and all of our teams are putting into ensuring a strong school start for our system for the 2526 school year. So with that, I think we're going to start with you, Director Goldadi. Jolene is the director of communications and marketing for our system, and we, in the last couple of years, have blended enrollment and marketing so that we can be more strategic with our enrollment and marketing efforts. So Jolene also supervises the enrollment team and she'll provide a high-level enrollment update. And then I do want to make sure our board members and community know that we are coupling this report with a school opening report on September 9. So this reflects the work that we have been doing to ready our system, and then on September 9, we'll hopefully share some good news about how school opening went. So Jolene, you want to take it away?
Sure. Thanks, Dr. Mary Perry-Reed. Okay, so I'm going to start my enrollment presentation off with a bit of a disclaimer, which is not typical, but the one thing I want to just make sure everybody understands is that August 18 is not necessarily a date where we can predict with any certainty, like how numbers are going to fall for sure. There's still a lot of variance involved. A lot of people are still enrolling into our system. We see that in our enrollment office. It starts ramping up and we see a lot more humans in the building, starting It starts ramping up, and we see a lot more humans in the building starting in August. So what I'm going to share is, at best, information that is going to likely change the next time I come to the board table to present on it. But we can sort of look at the information that we have now and kind of look at where we were last year and begin to make some predictions. So just to just keep that in your brain, that this is preliminary information. So with that said, the good news is that overall, our enrollment numbers are really strong. We are above projections currently, and so that's always a good place to be, and so we're outperforming. But we also know that we're going into a really challenging year. We are welcoming our COVID babies into the system. They were the babies born in 2020, and that was a really low birth year, the lowest birth year on record for at least like the last 20 years, probably longer than that. So we are going into that headwind. And then, looking at our preliminary results, we see that we have the strongest growth at the secondary level, which makes sense, given that there's lower birth rate at the younger level, and our Spanish immersion program continues to perform really strongly, and virtual EDU is also, there's some really bright spots there, too. Next slide. So if you want to know what you're looking at, I tried to think about how this, you know, how to compare apples to apples. So what we did is we compared August 18th, which was yesterday, that's when we pulled the data, 2025, to August 18th, 2024, just to sort of look like, you know, like, how are things and how were things last year? So currently, we are about 99 students above projection. Again, that doesn't mean a whole lot on August 18th, in all honesty. But it is a positive place to be. It certainly is a better place than negative. But we also know that we have a lot more families coming into the system. Last year, at this time, same date, we were up about 283 students. And then I looked at where were we September 30th, 2024, which is really close to the time when we solidify our numbers for the start of the school year. We kind of know at that point who is staying with us and who is left. And then that number had dropped. We had a positive variance of 56 students, still really great, still really positive. But the one thing I want to emphasize is just because the variance was that drastic last year, I don't think that we're going to expect to see anything like that this year. Next slide. And there's a couple of reasons for it. I think that our numbers are likely more accurate than they were last year. Last year, we were still in a bit of that COVID swing of like going over here, all the way over here, and not really finding any balance yet. But the other thing that has changed is we've done a number of things in the enrollment office to help make sure our numbers in the spring are a little bit more reliable. So one of those things is that we had families, this is sort of a real technical detail, but when they were on the waiting list, if they wanted to enroll into Hopkins, we required them to actually, like, to apply and to go through that enrollment process. Before, what we would do is we would say, okay, great, you want to come to Hopkins? We'll just, you know, like, we have you down as yes, and you can enroll when it's convenient for you. And the thing about the open enrollment climate especially is that a lot of families are on multiple lists. They are, and you don't know if you're somebody's first choice, second choice. So requiring them to actually enroll within two weeks, otherwise you're going to go down to the, you know, bottom of the waiting list, and somebody else is going to, you know, get a spot, that really gives us a picture of who's serious about enrolling, because it's a process. And also, it requires a records request. It triggers all these things. So we are hopeful that that will give us a more accurate picture of who is with us and how serious they are about us, and maybe that will begin to take some of that variance out of the picture. The other thing is our clerical staff was really diligent about calling every certain, every student that was in the census and getting clear on, are you coming, are you not coming? So we had that information as well. And then an unexpected thing that happened was a lot of our opt-in engagement was during the summer, and that happened to be like a reminder to some families of like, oh yeah, you emailed me, and I need to let you know I'm not coming, we've moved. So when we would send out messages as part of the opt-in, the enrollment office would get this spike of people, you know, kind of like letting us know that they, of their status, when maybe we wouldn't hear from them until about now. And so sort of what's resulted from that is our enrollment office is kind of like eerily, we're not quiet, but this is, it's usually insanity, and it's not insanity, it's kind of manageable right now. So it's just been a really interesting dynamic and another, like a reason to think that our numbers are pretty solid. Next slide. So here's what we are seeing, and again, it's just August 18th, and so take all of this with a grain of salt. Our strongest gains are in secondary. We are 128 over projection there. And then we have really deep waiting lists as well. So at Hopkins High School alone, we have 102 kids that want to get into Hopkins High School now, and we cannot accept them because we don't have the capacity. West and North have a combined waiting list of 77. So in addition to, you know, us being, going into the year pretty strong, we have these really deep waiting lists of people wanting to get in as well. And enrollment, we have a slight negative variance of 30 students, and that means that we're 30 down off of projection, which is definitely not a terrible place to be, especially at this point of the, point in the game, and probably wouldn't even be that terrible of a place to be, even if it was October 1st, to be honest. And even if we look at that 30 number, we have a variety of students that are enrolled in our system but just haven't given us their proof of residency, and when they finish that technical detail, they'll be in our count. So if we bring those in, then actually, that negative variance is down to 14. So 14 kids off projection, which is pretty good. But we do know that that low birth rate is going to play a factor, because, you know, we can only recruit so many kids, and if they just aren't there, it's not as, it's not possible. Next slide. And I just wanted to give a little bit of a snapshot on our choice programs, at least for juntos and Jingjing. We can say with more accuracy at this point that these are probably our numbers, just because we have applications for them so much earlier into the process than we do anything else. Our juntos number looks really good, it's 410 total, that K5 number. And then we obviously have a middle school program as well, and I didn't put that into the count. So that continues to be really strong, and that's about where we projected it to be. And then Jingjing is a little lower at 191 students, but again, that's right where we projected it to be. So in terms of budget and staffing, that's what we wanted, that's what we expected. And then virtual EDU is, continues to be just this really interesting case. So we are over projection at both the elementary and the secondary level, much more so at the secondary level. We are projected for 108 students, and we have 130 that we're going into the year with. And this is interesting because we know that virtual EDU actually spikes after the school year starts, kind of like around that September 15th time to all the way into like November, December. So it's going to be really interesting. Something we'll be watching is what virtual EDU secondary does. And we've done some specific training and sort of like branding and persona building around that particular department, or, I'm sorry, school. So it'll just be interesting to see how that all plays out, and I will come back to you with more in October. So I'll give it now to Dr. Lightfoot.
Thank you. As was mentioned, it has been a busy summer with lots of activity. And as also was mentioned, we're still in process, even looking at making offers today for positions that start as soon as possible. And of course, we're doing all of that work to get ready for the first day of student attendance. So with that, just a couple key highlights. We have been doing some leadership searches, how about that for tongue twister, for administrative searches that we were conducting and are happy to report, and you'll get that through some of the introductions that were provided in our superintendent's report, as well as information that will be presented to you from individuals at the table who are joining us, as well as individuals who will present to you at our next meeting as well. So very happy about where we are with our search for that additional leadership opportunity that we have here in Hopkins. Our general staffing process, most departments are fully staffed or nearing full staffing at the start of school. Happy to report on that. We are seeing some part-time vacancies in some real key areas. We're looking to try to consolidate and make some offers in English-language learner positions. We do have a reading instruction part-time that we're looking at, potentially second semester, I believe, is what we're looking at right now. And then we do have a few select classroom paraprofessionals, nowhere near what we have had in previous years. So good to know that the work that we've been doing to recruit and retain paraprofessional staff members is helping us start the year strong. And then, as well with special services, and special services, and I'll let Director Contreras mention a couple of things there, but what we have seen is we have seen, and we started really strong as we approached the summer, a couple positions have shifted due to some last-minute resignations. But beyond that, it's a little bit more of a speech. But other additional points you'd point out there?
Sure. This is probably the best retention we've had in special ed prior to like COVID. So I think we have three teachers, we received last-minute resignations as of July 15th. So three teacher positions opened, less than five parapositions, and a couple SOP positions speech. So this is like the best we've done. I think retention is up, and we'll talk more about that later.
And then also, as mentioned, with some of the dynamics that we're seeing related to enrollment, we have been doing some monitoring on a very close level in the particular areas that we were seeing where we were on the cusp of looking to add additional staff. Where we have placed staff right now is we've done a new classroom section that was added to an elementary school, Glen Lake, to accommodate the enrollment shifts we were seeing there in specific grade levels. So we have done that with targeted work. We've also been looking at an elementary immersion programming area within Shenching so that we could look at bringing additional support staff to that grade level so that we could be mindful of what we were seeing with some of the cusp numbers. And there again, still early, where one or two students might shift and may put pieces in a different place, so we're mindful of how we're watching that in this next week. Lastly, at the high school and the middle level, what we've been looking at, a real particular sections where, based on, for example, Wes saying, we just got five 7th graders today, those kinds of experiences that we're really responding to, where we may need additional sections, depending on what particular classes we're looking at that point in time, that we know that we'll continue to see as we start the school year. So we've added those in individual capacity as well to address that. So I believe that's the brief update. We as well will have more information when we get to the particulars with the start. I'll turn it over to Dr. Campy.
Good evening, everybody. As Dr. Lightfoot said, our sites are mostly fully staffed, and that is a huge thing for principals at this time of year to be thinking about hiring as a distraction, unfortunately, as you have so many things to do to prepare for staff returning and students coming right behind them. We do have a new principal at Alice Smith, and she is starting strong, Sabrina Schmidtky, and a very dynamic leadership model at the high school that is providing some stability there, because that team is very familiar with the staff, the students, the space, and it's also giving an opportunity for them to strengthen their leadership skills with some new responsibilities. Last week, the leaders spent three days in professional development, or maybe that was two weeks ago. Wow. And they were there with their instructional leadership teams, and they all shared their learning and teaching goals, as well as their plans for how they will achieve it. They will finish their goals and submit their final goals for learning and teaching, culture, and operations by mid-September, and have their professional development plans that will support those goals, solidified by the end of September. As you heard from Dr. Erdl earlier, talking about the data review meetings that we'll be doing, those will be coupled with our quarterly goals meetings with leaders, during which we monitor their progress towards their site goals. And then we have new teachers that started, I think, was today officially their start? Iffy. They had the big kickoff today with the amazing chocolate cake. If you haven't tried it, you should really come to kickoff and have the cake. And then our returning teachers will be coming back to us next week with our district kickoff a week from today. I will pass it to Delisa, our lead for before and aftercare.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Kids and Company, I'll also give a disclosure that these numbers were on Monday, and I have different numbers today, because Kids and Company is constantly moving as we begin the school year. But Kids and Company is currently preparing to begin the school year with 808 students across six sites in before and after-school care. We currently have 136 students waiting for contract approval. The bulk of those students are new to Kids and Company or requested care after or outside of our request window in April. During the request window, we received about 1,073 requests for care, which is a 22% increase from last school year. Requests are still coming in today. We received quite a few today, as well as we're seeing some movement between schedule changes as well as contract withdrawals. As well as this year, we'll continue to implement our shared site model between Gatewood and Glen Lake. This will be for aftercare, and then Gatewood will open for before care on location, providing care at students' homeschool site. We will have our non-school day options, so we'll serve students at three sites across the district, being Glen Lake, Eisenhower, and Meadowbrook, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM on those non-school days. Currently, we have a pretty full team. We also had really great retention of about 85 to 90% of staff returning from school year, but about 100% returning from the summer. We currently have a team of five site leads, 13 supervisors. Our newest position, we will have five inclusion specialists supporting students in program and 37 activity assistants. We continue to hire as we get closer to the school year. We currently have 11 job offers out pending and going through the HR pipeline, and then we're continuing to recruit for about six to eight additional staff to join our team. Compared to this year, compared to last year, I guess I should give the comparison. So I said 808 will start the school year with us. Last year, we had 668 start with us. This time, on this date last year, we had 239 students on our waitlist, with current being 136. So we're seeing some really great movement with our efficiency, as well as being able to retain staff and find staff who are willing to work in childcare settings. We know two years ago, we seen a really big shift on childcare not being the premium career path, and I think we're starting to see a shift. Also, we've done a lot of great work with partnering with talent agencies to kind of learn more about hiring trends and continuing to adopt some of those best practices, as well as researching our own and finding new and great ways to partner with HR, to try new initiatives and those sorts of things. Thank you for your time. So I'll hand it over to Dr. Erdl and Director Contreras.
Hello again. Fonda and I are going to talk a little bit about professional development and training. As Dr. Mary Perry mentioned, well, actually, Dr. Campy mentioned, we're excited about our kickoff on August 26th, which is a week from today. And I know that sometimes board members attend the morning session and the lunch, but I just want to extend an invitation that you're all welcome and enthusiastically invited to attend the program review launch, which will also be at the high school in the auditorium. Of course, I think it's going to be really exciting and fun, but I think that you might be interested to see, to be in the space with all of the teachers who are getting the first blush of what that continuous improvement process is going to look like for their curricular area. Hilt has a new draft theory of action for 25-26. Just as a reminder, Hilt is the Hopkins Instructional Leadership Team. It's a team of about 60 to 70 school and district leaders who gather on a monthly basis, hosted by the IDL team, and their, the goal is improvement in learning and teaching. So our draft theory of action for this year is if we engage in consistent data review protocols, followed by coherent, actionable strategies.
protocols, followed by coherent, actionable strategies designed to improve student achievement, then we will increase the percentage of students successfully accessing tier-one instruction from X to Y with a goal of 80%. And so, as Dr. Campi alluded to, we are having quarterly goals and data meetings, just to really sort of attack this issue on multiple fronts. On the right, you see belonging, consistency, and coherence. In the spring, when Ilsa talked about our math adoption, some of the research that we mentioned at the board table and have also been utilizing is from the Opportunity Makers, which is the new teacher project. And the three factors that they found in schools that are truly changing trajectories for children are belonging, consistency, and coherence. And so, we have really adopted that as a frame for how we are approaching a lot of our work this year, so you'll be seeing a lot about that. Belonging refers to the emotional climate for learning. Consistency is consistently good teaching and standards-based content. And coherence is unified instructional program and clear priorities and outcomes. Next slide, please. Our new math materials are en route. So far, they've been received at Virtual EDU, which is ironic because that's a tiny site for us, for the elementary, but they're en route, so we're pretty excited about that. Also, on the 26th, if you're around, you are welcome to join our elementary teachers in the cafeteria as they are getting their, for most of them, their first real lesson in, you know, how are they going to start using these materials? Our principals, elementary principals got in onboarding with that this afternoon. And we have, we're engaging some math implementation specialists to support that professional learning and growth for our elementary team because it's a heavy lift. And so, those folks will be across the elementary, supporting teachers, really on the ground with getting comfortable with these materials. It would not be a board meeting if I didn't mention letters training, so here you go. We have 130 teachers who are taking volume two this year, and six administrators who are doing letters for admin. There are 109 elementary teachers who are totally completed, and 37 early childhood educators who are completed, so we're really proud of those, of those numbers. It's because we started early, we are, have people that are finishing ahead, so we're happy about that. And I'll turn it over to Director Contreras.
Thank you. So, one of the things that I'm super excited about is para-PED and onboarding. I think for so long, we've just had vacancies and have been so desperate that we just get those folks into the classrooms before really slowing down the process and equipping them to be in that space. So, we are rolling out PD once a month, or I should say, onboarding once a month for any para that comes aboard, like in between. It's our highest turnover area in the district. But when there are openings, just slowing down the process, getting them on-boarded, making sure they're highly qualified, so we'll have, last year, we spent a lot of time getting folks, we had to do multiple processes, including them taking tests if they didn't have at least two years of college, so trying to get them highly qualified. And then we had to do like a local assessment for those that had been in the district longer than three years, but maybe weren't college educated. So, now, we just will start that process for any para, whether it's sped or not, of having them take the para protest as they come aboard and go through some trainings. The other thing is that we will have site mentors so that the new paras can follow them at sites. I think a couple of years ago, there was a person hired for the position, but she was pulled a million different ways, including supporting Oracle. So, we've created a process that's going to help. And then, in addition to that, each site will have sped, or I'm sorry, para training that encompasses the needs of the building. So, for instance, if it's belonging, or if there's a need to do trauma-informed PD, those site leaders will look at, insped leaders will kind of look at what's the need of the students so that they can match the PD. So, creating different opportunities, site-specific, on what the needs are, and really getting into supporting teachers and other staff in the buildings through trainings. So, we've talked about it, but now we're actually asking building leaders and sped leaders to carve out time for the needs of their buildings, and tapping into the resources of, say, our occupational therapist, if there's a need for regulation training, or tapping into the social worker counselors and other staff to meet the needs of the students, because they're the ones that hold that expert lens. And so, really doing some planning about what are the needs of sites or classrooms within the building to get at those needs. Kind of comprehensive PD. And I will turn it over to John Wetter.
Thank you, Director Contreras. Good evening, everyone. I will be talking about some infrastructure upgrades throughout the school district, both in technology, as well as in buildings and grounds. As you may remember, this last spring, our Assistant Director for Buildings and Grounds left for another opportunity, and so I have stepped in with a team to help make sure that all of our projects kept moving through the summer as we need to be ready to go. So, I'll be speaking to both of those as well. And happy to announce, as Dr. Lightfoot mentioned, with some of our hiring, that our new Assistant Director for Buildings and Grounds, Gino Mizelli, started yesterday. So, we'll be certainly working with him to get all of that, get him up to speed, and understanding where we're at in the district as well. So, starting into our network infrastructure project, an introduction to the board was presented back in November, so really, right now, we're nearing the culmination of about 18 months' worth of planning that we then executed in six weeks this summer, which resulted in all, all schools and buildings having modern network infrastructure installed, including new Wi-Fi across all of our schools, both inside and outside, providing Wi-Fi for outdoor learning as well, as well as some of the back hall infrastructure, so that's our fiber optics and other pieces to make sure that we have all of that in place and in a robust manner. And all of that being backed by upgraded power systems. We've experienced many times of storms this summer, and we experience throughout every year, we have quite a few power outages across the district with really almost any storm system that goes through the area. Really reliability has been paramount in making sure that we are on top of that. So, a lot of new power systems installed, battery backup systems, as well as at the high school for the first time now, working with the facilities project that I'll be mentioning here in a minute. We'll also have a generator-backed power systems for most of the school, really making sure that we're ensuring that connectivity for those life safety systems, even in a power outage. That work began on July 1st, which is our required start date for our federal E-rate regulations, and that work is completed on schedule and is now in what we call the stabilization period. So, everything is installed, everything is in place. However, we still have a lot of details to go through and putting into place, and that Wi-Fi tuning will continue until about fall break. We have the systems ready to go, but may not be widely known, you actually can't fully tune a Wi-Fi system until you actually have people in the rooms, because people are actually an absorber of radio waves, because we're mostly made of water. And so, you cannot actually tune your system until you actually have people there. So, that work will certainly continue over the next few weeks, and any, any final details around that, we would be putting in place over, over fall break. So, next slide. Also happening this summer was at Hopkins High School, was our major construction project. We had smaller projects, you know, small, maybe outdoor landscaping pieces, some infrastructure pieces at a few other of our schools, but the majority of the work this summer happened at the high school, as well as a project at our bus depot where we replaced a couple of the rooftop units there for HVAC, as well as some of the heating pieces in their shop area and other pieces at the, at the bus depot. But at the high school, the investment this summer is about $17.5 million into the high school, where we replaced the majority of the cold and hot water piping in the school, including both drinking water, as well as the heating and cooling systems. That upgraded also the school heating system, moving away from boilers that were installed back in the 1950s to a modern, high-efficiency hot water heating system. So, this changes some of the license requirements, makes it more simplified licensing for the school district as we go forward, as well as really increasing our energy efficiency as well. This concludes 19 years' worth of work at the high school to get us to this point, as we've been doing the high school through sections of project over all of the years. We were almost two miles of piping were installed into the high school this summer. We were one of the largest pipe fitting projects in the Twin Cities, period, this last summer. So, a major undertaking, and, you know, really credit goes to our contractors who have been on top of it. We've had very smooth progress throughout the summer, with our substantial completion being this last Friday. The only hiccup being that is the system was coming online today to cool our auditorium and our part of the cafeteria for our new teacher day. The system would not run for more than about 30 seconds at a time. That will be getting work done tomorrow morning. So, there are always some of those last second things after it's been running great for two days, it all of a sudden decided today was not going to be a day. But that will certainly get smoothed out as we get closer to school here. So, next slide. Also, at the high school, besides all of that piping that happened, it was new cooling system serving part of the east wing. Also, overall, the entire high school, a whole new HVAC control system upgrade, as well as the, the services that support the entire district were upgraded as part of that project to the, to the new system as well. And so, in addition to that, IT also partners with Buildings and Grounds in these large projects to make sure, as long as we're going to have all of the ceilings down in these areas and doing this major infrastructure work, we also replace all of the IT cabling in these areas to bring them up to current standards as well. Many of the, much of this cabling being original to when these sections of the high school were built. So, all of that was upgraded here, and the networking in that area of the school went live yesterday morning. We started moving air yesterday morning in those areas, and I expect that we'll have cooling in those areas starting tomorrow. So, those are the infrastructure pieces that we've been implemented throughout. Next slide, I will be handing off to Transportation and Assistant Director Naisha Williams.
Thank you, Director Wetter. So, oh, sorry, I went back. For transportation, we have begun routing over the summer in our new routing platform, which was utilized this year to improve the efficiencies and to strengthen the communication. I will say, we started routing long before school ended with different hiccups because it's a new system. We, we went through summer with our trial phase, and we're fully all routed in our brand-new system for this new upcoming school year. Our updates were implemented to support the move to our two elementary schools that moved over to the third tier, along with our non-public schools moving to the third tier, which is aligning with our budget considerations. Also, moving the tiers, in addition to the new system, was probably the most that we've done with different changes at one time. Little bit more work to do both at the same time, but we, we've successfully moved over into both of those new different processes. Our routing registration process for our opt-in is complete, and we adjusted all of our routes for efficiency based on the registration data. So, what we started doing was routing every student, and then we adjusted after we received our opt-in data. And we are still partnering with MTN and Lake Country for our transportation services. This helps us with our driver shortages. We've been doing pretty well with driver shortages by utilizing both contractors where one may not have drivers, the other seems to have them. It's, it's still difficult and a hard time across the US for drivers right now, so we have been doing pretty well with the two. And it's kind of a disclaimer, but not really, it's the same as what we're dealing with with enrollment and with our Kids &amp; Co. is routing is still in progress. We still have families that find out that they're in Kids &amp; Co., so they don't want to use the bus anymore, vice versa. We have families that are new enrolled, and so, we're still routing. Student counts and route assignments aren't going to be shared at this time, and that is because it is ongoing. We're not complete. We have most routes configured in where they need to be, but we are still adding kids every day, all day. I'll turn it over to Director Chi.
All right. Well, good evening, and thank you, Assistant Director Williams. I am excited to start this school year as the new Emergency Management and School Safety Coordinator. So, how we address the school year's safety and security initiatives is by engaging in a four-pronged approach. And ultimately, this four-pronged approach can be summarized into one word, collaboration. Collaboration from our students, all the way to our community partners, such as law enforcement. And through this collaboration, helps us understand and navigate our evolving security landscape within our unique educational ecosphere. That translates really to us as decision-makers, enables us to implement, develop, and augment our response typology, so our response procedures. And through that, that's how we accomplish a more safer and secure environment for our students, but also our staff, our parents, and our community. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chi. And we wanted to end this presentation with a note about our finance and budgeting challenges and also opportunities. As you can imagine, all of this work that you've heard described in the last 30 minutes or so requires resources, and we wanted to share the, the journey that we've been on to provide stability for our finance office and budgeting process. So, I think most of our board members have read the updates that have been provided to you, but this is a good time to update our community as well. So, we have posted for a Director of Business Services twice now. Our former Director of Business Service, Jerome Chapanduka, did move to another opportunity. He returned to Minneapolis Public Schools, and that left a vacancy with this very critical position. And what we've discovered throughout the last two, three months is that there are multiple systems across the state of Minnesota who are experiencing transition in leadership and staffing within the finance and budgeting space. So, we're not the only school system to now not have an official Director of, of Business Services. However, we, we are putting together a solution for that as we speak. As earlier this evening, our board did approve a contract through the Center for Effective School Operations, which will provide support and service in the area of finance, will provide an individual who will serve as our Director of Business Services, although they, they will be a consultant, but they will serve Hopkins Public Schools as our Director of Business Services. And the Center for Effective School Operations, otherwise known as CISO, will also provide services that normally are, are produced by a position called the controller. And so, we are excited to transition to an opportunity to really stabilize the core functions of our Business Services Department, which is a really small team of very hard-working folks. Dr. Lightfoot has been working closely with our Business Services staff. Dr. Lightfoot has been working closely with our Business Services staff and the two of us have been just really trying to lead in an effort to, to secure the, the staffing support that will allow us to start a responsible and accurate budgeting process for the 25, 26 school year. Also of note is an organization called Clifton Larson Allen. Hopkins has partnered with CLA for some time now and they are completing our fiscal year 24 audit, hopefully by mid to end September, and they will also facilitate our fiscal year 25 audit. So that's just a high-level overview of what we're, with the challenges and opportunities in the Business Services Department. And Nick, your name is on the slide also. I'm not sure if you have anything else to add.
Oh, I think that's great. The other work that we're pulling together is really the coordination of CISO and CLA so that we can not only think about where we are right now, but as we gain that set of information, how they both can partner in us really looking at that design and pulling that information together collectively. So we feel really good that there's a team approach to this work as well.
Well, thank you, everyone, for this very comprehensive report on our, our strong school start. Wondering if there's any comments or questions from my colleagues?
I had just a couple, given what we heard earlier. So, just a question about the waiting lists in Kids 'n Co. Are they different? Is there differences per site? Like, is one school experiencing a much bigger waitlist than, say, Eisenhower or another?
Yes, so we are seeing that our early start schools are seeing the most significant waitlists. While, I would say for our after-school care, our later schools do not have a waitlist for after-school care or there may be some kind of communication issue that's happening that puts one or two on our waitlist in those spaces. But yeah, I would say our early start schools.
So it varies according to which school? So some community members might be experiencing very small waitlists for Kids 'n Co. and others could have a bigger one?
Correct. I can give you an example really quick. Like, I would say Glen Lake, for instance, they're seeing about forty-five students on their waitlist versus like Ella Smith for Care has like ten. There's a, there's a, there's a big discrepancy, I would say.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then I was just also wondering about Transportation. You said that you're continuing to update the, the routes. Does that mean that are, are we communicating with families as they're being placed on a route? Or, like, so could some families have not heard yet?
Yes, we are planning to send bus information to all families on Friday, the 22nd. So, as we're adding new families, new enrolled families, they will receive bus information on that day.
Okay, so everyone will know by the 22nd?
Yes.
Thank you.
Everyone that is routed on a bus to start for the first day.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Chair Andreessen?
Yes, Director Zhao.
Hi. So my question or comment or thought is somewhat related to that. And, you know, I think it is a, you know, as a parent in the district, of course, it's a, just trying to figure it out is tough, right? And so, I, I'm curious, right, if, you know, there's an interplay between Transportation and after-school care. Can we kind of think of like the implication, right? And if like there's a, you know, a cancel fee or there's like a late fee or anything like that? Can we like, knowing that there's a lot of turbulence, can we waive those things, right? Like, if we know that, hey, we had a transportation difference, right? We can't, can or can't get to you, now you have to make a different choice with after-school care. I've heard, right, and maybe it's not true, but I've heard there's like a late fee or a cancellation fee. And so, if we could waive those, knowing that there's so much flux, I think that would be appreciated by parents, and me anyways.
So it is true that when a family lets us know that, you know, I receive my transportation now or, or something of that, we do waive those fees. Now, we do have a registration fee that's non-refundable, but we do kind of, we zero out that balance. We make sure there's not the withdrawal fee and those sorts of things because we're in partnership with Transportation. Now, there are some times when we miss that because a family doesn't say why they're canceling. And, you know, with the hustle and bustle, sometimes we forget to ask. But if a family does let us know, we do try to make sure it feels like a partnership.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, maybe for you, it might be easier just to waive it, I don't know. Like, assume that it's because of that, right? Like, is there a lot of people dropping and getting charged a fee without, because it's not Transportation? Or, we're not sure?
Yeah, there's tons of reasons that folks are dropping. You know, some folks remain in remote, like, they thought they were going to go back to the office and now they get to remain remote. Like, there's been lots of different variants, but for sure, if it's an internal partnership, be it that they're gonna do something else, we make sure that we waive those.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jelisa, what percent of families who initially request a contract end up canceling?
So I think this year, we've actually seen an uptick in cancellations. So we were actually just trying to, today, that was something that we were trying to figure out and get some data on because we've had quite a few. So, so far, what we're assuming is out of those, 1,073, we've maybe had about forty-five to fifty families come and withdraw their contracts. And generally, we probably only see about twenty, with twenty to twenty-five withdrawals each school year. So there has been an increase. I just don't have a percentage. Sorry.
So fewer than five, four or five percent?
Yeah, four or five percent, I would say.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair Andreessen has a question.
Yes, Director Roper.
Thank you all for being here tonight. It was really great. And I know it's getting late, so we'll keep you all along. Jelisa, are there any plans to reestablish any community partnerships to offset some of those waiting lists? Because I know that the restart YMCA was a really big one that a lot of families utilize, including myself. And when it abruptly ended, it was, it was a little bit difficult. And so, just under, just want to know, like, are there any plans to reestablish different community partnerships?
Not at this time. With budget considerations, we did have to consider our partnership with Transportation, taking families to and from the YMCA, and it did take a significant capacity as well as financial burden. So that was one component. And then also YMCA was not able to cover their expenses for providing care. As we were able to retain and hire, we were able to take in those families. And so, we ended up, as a, as a district, going below the YMCA's threshold for partnership. But we're willing to learn and have conversation with other childcare agencies, but they would need to be able to provide transportation to our families to relieve some of that burden for our own department. Yeah.
Chair Andreessen?
Yes.
Jelisa? Sorry. I have a question about the, I think you mentioned that there are eleven prospective candidates who are processing with HR right now. And if those individuals then go through the process and are onboarded, will they start taking students off of the waitlist that currently has 136 kids on it?
Correct.
Okay, so about how many students would then come off the waitlist with those eleven staff persons?
Yep. So I said that we're like at about an eighty-five percent retention. So some of those staff will replace staff that didn't come into us, come in with us for the school year. But we are anticipating maybe being able to take off. And because they're at various sites, so it sounds like a little amount, but they'll help relieve a whole waitlist, so maybe about forty-five students.
Oh, that's great. Okay. Thank you. Is there anything that we or community members can do to promote the opportunity for before and after-care employees to work for Hopkins? What are some suggested tips for recruiting?
Yes. I would say yes. So, for families, if they are a part of social media groups that have college students or retired folks or just their community in general, posting out the job, posting there. Or if they know a college student that lives at home, is in the district, or an alumni that maybe we haven't tapped into to come back and work for Kids 'n Company would be really great. Green teachers, so if you're a part of any, or green educators, I should say, because youth workers as well. If they're, you know, maybe not working in something that's fulfilling and they're wanting to get their toe into the district. While we don't like to see them leave us, but, you know, we like to think of ourselves as a door into the district. So, any of that sharing, you know, I'm not going to lie. I'll be at the grocery store and the cashier is talking to my own daughter and I'm like, have you ever thought about working with children? Like, you know, I have no shame at this point. You know, doing those kind of probing and sharing out. I think, you know, Kids 'n Company is a, I mean, being young or retired, it's a really great opportunity to give back, to earn income, to have really great, you know, fringe benefits and those sorts of things. I mean, it's a position that can lock you somewhere and you're not working weekends, you know? So I try to share that out with folks so if families can do that along with us, it's really helpful. But our campaign with HR right now is going really well. We're catching a lot, but the traction is, is slow. And if I could, give a shout-out to Michelle Wilcox, the Kids 'n Company Program Manager. She's solely doing the hiring on her own right now.
Oh, wow.
So we have one person trying to, you know, she's in interviews back-to-back, but also needing to end the summer and start the school year.
Right.
And everybody in the Community Ed Office right now is interviewing and recruiting. So, we're, we've, we're digging in, for sure. That would be helpful if families can do that.
Thank you. That was all really helpful. Thank you.
Chair Andreessen?
Yes, Treasure Heartland. Thank you. To kind of piggyback on the, you know, the request for help, Directors Smith, Reed Love, and Williams, I'm sorry. You guys are like really kind of catching the brunt here of our questions and I, I'm sure that you feel that and just want to acknowledge it. And thank you for your work. I know that, like, you are right there on the bleeding edge and so I don't want to target you guys in particular. And there's also this fact that, like, if students can't, if parents don't know their options or what's going to happen for Transportation and they don't know about Care, they could choose a different district or they could choose some other way to educate their kids. And so I'm wondering if there's anything you guys else need? If there's anything that comes to your mind, like, from the board, from legislature, from, from the other people in this room that can help you guys get students matched, can help us meet our deadline so that's parents know, you know, honestly, even if it's bad news, right? Just so that they know and can make a plan and accommodate what's going to happen for their kids.
I would say we have done a really good job in working with Communications to make sure that we're communicating as much as possible. Sometimes it may seem like over-communicating. And the reason being is because then families start signing up for everything and they may not qualify or whatnot, but we have sent out a lot of different messages. As for Kids 'n Company, Jelisa and I sit down and we work together to see if there's anything that we can do in our structure. So that's after we have our routes together. We know what programs are running, what we have. We go through and see what we can do to work together to partner. And then if there's something that works, we make sure that we make it work. So we have been looking at if it costs anything, how much work to put into it, what we need to get there, and we'll try our best. We also do share lists in the beginning of the school year. So when families are signing up for Kids 'n Co., we share the list to make sure that we know we can take them off the bus if they're not and they can relieve a space so that then other families, we can add on the bus. So those are things that we've been doing for a few years now, just to make sure that, and we've catch a lot. So our list together, we do find families that just don't notify us that they don't need the bus. And so we do end up taking a lot of families off just due to that. And then to speak to the fees, if we're in communication, we see on each other's lists, the fees are usually waived from conversations that we've had before. So if we have anything else that we can use the community for, I would say we're working on having community leaders for schools helping us with our Safe Walks to School program. Just whoever, at whatever site, if your students go there, if you volunteer, it'd be helpful to help with the community or have the community help to work with. We have a Transportation Safety Coordinator that connects with the schools about Safe Walks to School. We're looking for school personnel to help team up with the community in order to help get the students on their way to school. Now, that is not saying that we are saying that students should walk in a no-bus zone. That is just us saying that there is a program out here in Minnesota that is called Safe Walks to School that will help with certain things. Sometimes we can reach out and find grants and things like that if possible. As a community, there's literature that we'll send out to all the schools just to make sure that they know. And if there's anybody that wants to sign up, they can let us know in Transportation and we'll try to pair them with the school and see what we can do to have the community help.
Thank you. And, and one other thing that just came to mind while you were speaking right now is that we had a community member call and leave a public comment in the spring talking about Metro Transit. If there's any possibility, I know we do have some students. It's not necessarily that we have tons and tons of routes out here, but I know that a community member asked that we contact Metro Transit and see if there was, you know, if there were any routes or anything that aligned. Do you know if that has happened?
I've heard some things from some families, but that would be from families to Metro Transit. We wouldn't be able to partner as a district with Metro Transit. If, it would be a bigger conversation if we, as a district, did partner with Metro Transit. So for right now, what I did speak to families about is you're more than welcome to contact. A group of families together is always better. If everyone at the school wants the same thing, contacting Metro Transit or other places for private help is, is a good way to try. But we, as a district right now, we'd have to have some type of partnership, which would be us digging into other funds from somewhere. So it would have to start and be a way larger conversation for that.
Sure. And I can appreciate that you had a big enough lift. Is it something that potentially we can see how this year actually goes and see what the community of demand is and revisit?
Director Heartland, if I can also answer your question. And I know Naeisha probably won't say this, but I think one thing we could ask families to do is to lead with kindness at this point. To remember that there, we're also humans and parents on this side of the table and we empathize. You know, we both have to find childcare for our own children, transport our own children.
And I'm always on the waiting list for Kids 'n Co.
Don't say that. Yeah. But, you know, just remembering that, you know, the folks that open the door for your, your children, the people who teach your children, the people who feed your children, who watch your children are also humans with their own children or families. And just remembering to lead with kindness and that's, you know, and love. Like, that's the value that you've bought into when you've enrolled your student into Hopkins and just to remember. And also, there's lots of system changes that should take place for education that we know is very broad and very slow. But I think you enroll your children in Hopkins because you know that the folks who work here care. And just remembering that, I think from a community standpoint, is helpful. One thing I would add.
I really appreciate that and thank you for calling it out. It's, it's tough and I cannot, I mean, you guys clearly have, everyone here has a very hard job and I know that you guys, in particular, have a hard one.
I would, I would concur with that. You all have a very tough job and it's really difficult managing all the expectations of, you know, like the parents and the governance and the board. And so however we can support, especially, like specifically me, like however I can support with helping you all, please let me know. I'm down to have like brainstorming sessions on how we could support with any, you know, like strategic directions or connecting. Or either we can think about some engagement sessions with parents throughout the year so some folks won't, you know, feel like the brunt end of the stick, like, you know, if they miss a deadline. And so I think there's just ways that we can, you know, do some process improvement that will really support with, you know, parents feeling more engaged in the- with, you know, parents feeling more engaged in the process and not feeling frustrated with, like, getting transportation updates, like, 10 days before school start, and, or Kids &amp; Co. waiting lists. I know that is difficult for childcare everywhere, but we are your partners in this, so please don't feel, I know it's overwhelming, but we're here to help.
Thank you.
I also appreciate you saying that, and I think that it is a good reminder to all of us that we are all doing our best to support our community and our families, and I think that having this comprehensive report is a great way to start the conversation about how we're doing that, and I think that there are community members that are already working amongst themselves. I know that one of the big things that's happening at West, I almost said junior high, middle school is, what you mentioned, the safe routes to school, and that's a huge partnership with county, municipal, even state-level agencies that, that help with that. So, that's a great resource, as well as your neighbors are great resources, and I just want to reiterate that not only, I think, is public education facing a lack of resources, meaning finances, but one of the, the biggest lack, I think, recently is goodwill and community engagement in a positive way with public education, and I just want to remind our community that that is something that we cultivate in Hopkins and is a vital resource for all of our families to have, and it comes here. It coalesces here in, in the public schools, so thank you for doing the work you do every day for our community, we really appreciate it. Any other questions or comments before we move on to our next item?
Chair Andreessen, just before the team goes, I want to thank the board members for empathy and just really looking out for my colleagues in the space, for these amazing leaders who serve our district. I also want to just posit that with the fact that some of our families are feeling challenged, and so we hold both of these things, and I don't know if you can tell, but there's a high level of fatigue, and I, I just want to thank each of you for all of the things that you have done throughout this entire summer to right-size a system that, as Director Westmoreland mentioned earlier, is suffering the compounding impact of being perpetually underfunded. So, like, this is none of our fault, and we had to make a giant budget reduction, we had to make some hard decisions, and then this team of amazing individuals came together to figure out how we're gonna make it work. And so, it's very challenging, the work, and it's also challenging when we, you know, want to have all of our families be happy and satisfied, and we're, we're not always able to do that. So I just want to hold both of those, and, and thank you tremendously for all the work, and then being so thoughtful in the presentation, it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, takes us to a resolution, supporting paid family engagement leave and calling for local collaboration to strengthen family empowerment in public education. I will, before turning this over to Director Roper, who crafted and brought this resolution to the Hopkins School Board, would like to say that it is before us today because of the, the requirements now to get resolutions into the Minnesota School Board Association's Delegate Assembly. The board, the full board has to approve a resolution before we can take it to that Delegate Assembly. That is a place that Vice Chair Ross and I go every year to hear about different resolutions that are looking to be added to MSBA's slate of legislation that they're gonna be working on for the year and beyond, until it gets passes, it passes. So that's why we have it before you today, because they are, we are currently working, MSBA is currently working on resolutions for the Delegate Assembly, which happens in December, and so, once we get this, once we've had the discussion, and if we pass the resolution, we can then take it to the Delegate Assembly, but we're also going to bring it to other school boards, so that they can join the support at the Delegate Assembly, and I think that we will find that a lot of collaboration and work across jurisdictions is going to be necessary to get this passed. But I will turn it over to Director Roper to talk more about what this resolution means and the impact it could have here in Hopkins.
Thank you so much, Chair Andreessen. So, you know, again, thank you all. It is both an honor and a responsibility to speak tonight about the family engagement resolution. At its core, this resolution is about partnership between families, schools, and businesses to ensure that every student in Hopkins in our state has the opportunity to succeed. This is not only about education, I want to just be very clear, it's about the health of our community, the strength of our economy, and the promise that we are making to the next generation. So, I want to name the challenge, and in Minnesota, we are currently facing a serious one, and before, some of the statistics that we learned about tonight during some of our workshops and some of the presentations, is that we understand, like, before the pandemic, about 85% of students attended school regularly. Today, that number has fallen below 70% statewide, and in some high-poverty schools, fewer than 1 in 4 students attend consistently, and that is information from the Minnesota Department of Education, and we know that chronic, excuse me, absenteeism, excuse me, absenteeism directly impacts student achievement, behavior, and long-term opportunities, and here in Hopkins, as we know, we are seeing the same trends, attendance struggles, behavior challenges, and the need for stronger connections between home and school, and the research is very clear that family engagement is one of the strongest predictors of student success. Students with engaged caregivers are twice as likely to earn higher grades and graduate on time, and that is also a data point from Harvard Family Research Project, and they are also most likely to attend school consistently, show stronger literacy in math and growth, and experience fewer behavior challenges. Now, also want to note the workforce connection here, and why this matters, because today's students are tomorrow's workforce, and so right now, employers across Minnesota are saying the same thing, they need a workforce that is skilled, adaptable, and ready for innovation, and the world, according to, like, the World Economic Forum, you know, reports that 50% of employers are moving toward skills-based hiring. That means that academic achievement, attendance, and engagement are directly tied to future workforce readiness, and if students are missing school today, they are missing the preparation that are needed for, that's needed for tomorrow's innovators, entrepreneurs, and leaders, and family engagement is not only an education issue, it is a workforce pipeline issue. And so, I would love to position this, I am positioning this as a win-win for businesses, because our businesses are not bystanders in this, they are partners and heroes, and from the research, we know that when employees feel supported in balancing work and family, they are 20% more likely to stay and 15% more productive, and that's also a data point from Boston College Center, Work and Family, and 52% of employees say that when, say they would leave a job for one that better supports their family, and that's a data point from Gallup in 2022. So, family-friendly business practices aren't just for good for families, they strengthen retention, reduce turnover costs, and improve the bottom line. And so, by partnering with schools on family engagement, businesses can help ensure that Minnesota workforce or of tomorrow is stronger, healthier, and better prepared to compete in a global economy. And so, I want to just be very clear that this resolution is not a mandate for businesses, this is a, for the district to engage in a district-wide plan for family engagement, but it's also an invitation for businesses to be partners and co-designers of a model that works for everyone, and so that's how we are positioning this today with this tiered, excuse me, resolution. And so, I don't know, do we read the resolution now, or how, we, or do I ask, sorry, any questions? Is that how that goes?
Yeah, we can, we can talk a little bit before, since our board colleagues are seeing this for the first time, so just wondering if there are any questions, and just to reiterate that the resolution would be the, you know, we would be asking our administration to craft and create a comprehensive parent, not parent, but family engagement plan, and that would be, that would have goals, and this resolution is to call on community partners, whether they be local, state, or national elected officials, or businesses, as Director Roper said, to ensure, to remove the barrier, remove a barrier for a full family engagement in public education by offering hours, up to 16 hours of paid leave annually for their employers. So that is how we are inviting our community partners in to support our family engagement plan as a district. So I think those are the big asks, but open up for questions from board colleagues, thoughts, comments.
Chair Andreessen?
Yes.
Well, first I want to say I'm incredibly supportive of the resolution, I think it's a conversation that's long overdue. I like the positionality that we need to collaborate with electeds across jurisdictions, our local business community, certainly our legislature, so kind of embedded in this is kind of a framework for the LAC as well, to really amplify this particular issue. Chair Andreessen, I appreciate how you talked about the MSBA Delegate Assembly, so that this could potentially, if it's voted on, if it's approved by the Assembly, become part of the slate of priorities for the Minnesota School Boards Association, which of course then amplifies it and brings it to the next level. Director Roper, thank you so much for the background on it. I'm curious about how you found out about this, and if there are already other districts that are working on this, or would we be the first to pass a resolution like this?
So, we would be the first district to pass a resolution asking for paid leave for, for family engagement. So, right now, there is a law that exists already within the state that has unpaid leave, up to 16 hours, that was passed in 2023, excuse me, no, I'm sorry, I think it was in 1990. I'll have to get the, the exact date of when that was passed, but there have been efforts before to transition this, excuse me, to get this to be paid family leave, but I know that there is, like, a lot of hesitation and, like, a lot of pushback from, you know, the business community, and so I discovered this as I've been talking to families and, you know, just understanding the dynamics of why family engagement is so low, especially within our Black and Brown communities, and how we could involve them more in the school district, and one of the bigger, you know, patterns that I was hearing in the conversation was that it's hard for me to get off work, I can't take off work, you know, I'm in an hourly position, taking off even two hours, and having two hours off my paycheck would be an incredible detrimental impact to my family's finances, right, and these are single-family homes, and we were talking that, that I spoke to, middle-class families who don't qualify for any assistance, right, that's a whole nother conversation about middle class and what we qualify for, but, so that's really where this resolution came from, was trying to really think creatively on how can we get families to engage, and also understanding, also just understanding my own involvement in family engagement and what I have been doing, would love to see more creative ways and pathways for families to engage in a classroom outside of traditional methods such as, like, field trips, or, you know, maybe we'll come to, like, an event, but how can we thoughtfully create relationships with our teachers that will help increase, you know, some of the student achievement that we're looking to, you know, have in our outcome, in our student outcomes, and so, and with the ordinance, I've just been looking around just to see, you know, like, how can cities support, and also wanting to build a deeper, and evolve in our relationship with, like, our city partners. So that's how I thought about and discovered that a city can also pass an ordinance that require their businesses to, you know, that would require their businesses to offer this paid leave, so there was a lot of research that went into this, but of course, we would be, like, one of the first districts.
Thank you, thanks for that background.
And I think, too, looking at it in partnership with the district, having a comprehensive family engagement plan, this is one piece, and this is something that community partners can do to remove a significant barrier, but it is not the only way in which the district is going to be seeing this as a focus and a priority going forward. So that is one of the other things this resolution does, is establish that, creation of that plan.
Absolutely.
I have a question for Director Roper. Have you had any off-the-record conversations with any businesses or business, because I could see where the pushback would come from?
Yeah.
Is because this would be for non-exempt, and this, so since this would be private, we'd be asking the school district to collaborate with private businesses to basically provide some level of paid leave for families, so they'll be able to attend their child's sporting event. I just don't know whether or not you've gotten any support from any local businesses that would be like, yeah, that would be something we would be inclined to support, so then that child or caregiver can attend the child's, whatever the event is, is going on.
Yeah, absolutely, so I've had, like, a few conversations with some small business owners around this subject, not particularly in Hopkins, to be completely honest, that deep level of engagement is, is, takes a creative design process. We need to include our chambers, we have different organizations, there are community stakeholders, there are legislators, that is going to have to, who's gonna have to lead that conversation in collaboration with us, right? So this is just the, this is like the start, this is putting the stake in the ground, saying, hey, this is where our values is, this is where we are leading to, to enhance our engagement plan, but also to improve student outcomes, and also to support families, and, and we're inviting people to the table to come, and so this is step one, and we have, like, many more steps to go, and that does include very deep, very intentional thought partnership and engagement with different families, excuse me, with different families, job, I mean, business communities, again, like legislators, different nonprofit organizations, like, every, we're gonna have to really design and build a big coalition around what this could look like.
Thank you.
Chair Andreessen?
Yes, Treasure Heartland.
I think, to kind of piggyback off of what you just said, I mean, this school district has partnered and been kind of on a leading edge of several legislative initiatives in the past, and any, like, anything that comes with a fairly large dollar amount, I mean, it's a years-long process, so I know, Chair Andreessen, that you experienced that, like, with universal meals, so I mean, I so appreciate you, Director Roper, bringing that right now, and look forward to, like, signing this into law with you in six years, or whatever it's gonna take.
That's realistic, yeah.
And, you know, I say that as a joke, but it, but you're absolutely right, that this is kind of an opening salvo, and then getting that support from the MSBA, finding a model that works, all of those pieces are, the next steps in a very long process.
Yeah, it, it is a very long process, and that's why I positioned this as, like, a win-win for business, you know, the business community as well, because it is also their, you know, like, their, their co-designing is gonna really help shape what this looks like, especially in terms of, like, workforce innovation. I know more employers, I mean, employees are running I know more employers, I mean, employees are running towards family-friendly, family-friendly businesses and, you know, opportunities that works best for them. And also just being on the side of someone, I mean, just to be very completely honest, as someone who have been on the side of, you know, needing, having to choose between, can I take this day off for my mental health? Or having to go engage in my son's classroom when my son was first in kindergarten? Was a really big red flag for me. I said, wow, like I'm really having to choose between taking care of myself and taking or engaging in my child's education. And there was a really big imbalance that I noticed. That's why I got involved in the school district right away, because I have been a disparity, continue to be disparity, but now I'm on the side of disparity reduction. And so I have really deep insight on how this could be very beneficial for a lot of parents who are in the same boat as me. So that's why I, I know it's a bold and ambitious ask and a move, though it's very needed right now in our community. And I think about our bottom line for our families. I think about the bottom line for the businesses, creating a workforce that works for everyone and today's students are tomorrow's workforce, so.
Chair Andreessen.
Yes.
Dr. Mary Perry Reed, do you read this? And it has, you know, it's got a resolution that the administration will establish a family engagement plan. Obviously, we are in a spot where it is, you know, everyone's kind of tapped out. You just referenced fatigue from your leaders. Is there buy-in? I mean, I know that there are like NASA and family engagement plans and already, like especially in special services and, and transportation has to, has to engage with families constantly. Is this something that can be done by the district? Concerns or thoughts?
I do not have concerns because this is work that should already be embedded into what we do and how we operate. Also, if we were to find ways to, you know, like systematize or standardize, well, standardize is probably not the right word. I say systematize because we would want to engage in a family engagement effort that systematically reaches all families, right? But of course, it can't be a standard process because we need to, we need to use unique and varied ways of reaching out to our different families. And I would say that our elementary schools are well-positioned to like bring their family engagement efforts to the next level with last year's focus at the middle school level on increasing family engagement at both North and West. I think that those two schools are well-positioned to, you know, maybe bring this, their efforts to the next level. And then I believe that our team at the high school would be genuinely interested in this work. So, you know, there's always a little bit of extra work involved. And we, we have school leaders here who recognize that authentic family engagement only helps students feel better about their learning, learn at higher levels. So it's, it's an investment that is well worth people's time. So we can definitely work with our schools on this.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking that question. Anyone else? I'd just like to draw attention to one request that was brought forward from a leader in, under the "Now Therefore Be It Resolved" section in the fourth bullet. There is a sentence that includes, that says K through 12 students. And the request was that it be pre-K through 12. I would also say that I think we could add a plus there because we have students outside of 12 who do our transition plus. So just wanting to make sure that all of our kiddos are included. So that's the only suggested change I have. Does anyone have anything else?
I would just like to add too, like this is a lot of the work that I'm doing in collaboration with like our community education. So like with, like with Lyndi Leesman and another few parents, like Belita Moore, like just designing a coalition, you know, like the Hopkins Coalition for like Black Scholar Success. Like this is the work that we're already doing that would complement the district's family engagement plan. So we're really doing a lot of comprehensive work right, right now. But also I want to just ensure that this is, while we're working with Black and Brown students, this is going to benefit every student. And every student, every caregiver, every family, regardless of how you identify, is going to benefit from the enhancements that we're making right now. So like I want to shout out the parent that's in the audience right now who stayed so gracefully for our entire meeting, being here advocating for childcare and for transportation. Like those are the families that we, I think about in mind when we're thinking about being bold in action to move things forward. So this is why this is super important. And it's a, an advocacy point. Again, we have to still get buy-in from our city partners and, you know, our business community. So that's going to be a lot of a conversation. But I think we're able to achieve this with the right amount of work and grit behind this, so.
Thank you, Director Roper. So there's a couple of logistics that we'll need to go through for this. Since we do not have a clerk, I'm wondering if Vice Chair Ross would like to reprise his duty?
Don't tell Clerk Thompson.
Mom's the word.
I am a clerk emerita from like eight years ago.
Oh, that's true.
So if, if you ever find yourself in need.
Right, we'll call on you. And so what we can, what we'll do is read the resolution. Director Roper, would you like to do that? Or would you like me to read it?
You can.
Nonsense is.
Okay. So I will read the resolution with the suggested change. And then the, I guess we look for a motion. Okay, so first, I would look for a motion that the board pass the following resolution. Whereas, "Family engagement is a proven driver of student success and well-being, and strong caregiver-school partnerships create more accountable, thriving schools. Whereas, families across our community, especially low-income and historically underserved families, face barriers to attending school events, caregiver-teacher conferences, IEP meetings, and other critical engagement opportunities due to work constraints. Whereas, the current system disproportionately disadvantages working-class caregivers and perpetuates longstanding inequities, which the board is committed to address. Whereas, the Hopkins School Board affirms that no caregiver should have to choose between earning a paycheck and engaging in their child's education. Whereas, community-centered leadership demands collaboration between schools, cities, counties, and state government to remove systemic obstacles that limit civic engagement and educational opportunities. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the Hopkins School Board directs the district administration to establish a family engagement plan that establishes family partnership goals at the district and site levels. The board calls on local leaders and the state of Minnesota to create and implement a policy providing up to 16 hours of paid leave annually for caregivers and guardians to participate in school-related activities. The school board encourages municipalities within our district to put in place an ordinance establishing a requirement for family engagement leave, which will serve as a model for the state and complement the district's family partnership goals. The school board urges the Minnesota Legislature to pass a law that guarantees all caregivers and guardians of pre-K through 12-plus students access to paid time off for school-related involvement, aligning this law with workforce participation, public health, family stability, and educational goals. The school board commits to collaborating with local and state leaders, businesses, and advocacy groups to pursue this policy across jurisdictions. Be it finally resolved, that the Hopkins Public School Board remains committed to bold, cooperative, family-first solutions that strengthen our democracy, empower caregivers, and uplift the academic and social success of every student." Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Vice Chair Ross, please, please call the roll.
Chair Andreessen.
Aye.
Director Roper.
Aye.
Treasurer Heartland.
Aye.
Director Westmoreland.
Aye.
Director Zhao.
Aye.
Director Ross.
Aye.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Well done.
Thank you, Director Roper.
And now we begin our work.
Thank you for your partnership, everyone.
So we are going to have a resolution calling an executive session coming up. I do want to give all board members a chance to do a board member report before we go into closed session. And then we will approve the incidental report. I hope everyone had a chance to take a look at that before tonight's meeting. And it is on, it is a special services update, and it talks about our current health services. So first, we will go ahead and go around the table, introduce ourselves. And if you have a report to share, please do so. Would you like to start, Director Roper?
Sure. So my name is Brooke Roper. I am entering into my third year on the school board already. I have two amazing kids in the district. For the sake of time, I'll keep it very brief. Just been able, over the summer, just been engaging in different activities and events just related to education. Like one event that I went to was with the African-American Leadership Forum and just talking to a bunch of different leaders in our, in our city, excuse me, across the metro who are leading work in education. And just discovering a lot of synergy around partnership and just wanting to be involved in our district about family engagement as well. And so those are conversations I've been having all, all summer. Been taking time to just really seriously like mentally rest over the summer as well and just taking time to debrief. And Treasurer Heartland and I had an opportunity to go see, and I think Director Westmoreland too, went to go tour Purpitch of the arts. And it was an amazing, amazing tour. Allegra is doing such great work over there. It was, I encourage everyone to go see it. And I would love to give a huge shout-out to Mad Dads, You Matter, and Foundations Church for their donation of backpacks that they gave to the district. They gave over four boxes of backpacks to Resource West to support with their backpack donation drive right now. And so this is the second year they have done it. I am so grateful for Jordan and Nisa, for their dedication towards, you know, our edu, just our education in our district. And would love to work with them, to find ways to work with their organization because they are so critical in our community and just moving great work. So shout-out to Mad Dads, You Matter, Foundations Church, Jordan and Nisa, thank you. And am I missing anything? Please charge it to my heart and my head because it's getting bedtime. You all know how I am. It has not changed. So I'm ready to go sleep, but I know we have important work to do, so. But thank you all for all your work. I'm looking forward to working with everyone.
Good evening. I am Rachel Heartland. I use she/her pronouns. I'm currently serving as the treasurer. It is my fourth school year as a member of the board. And yes, as we kind of mentioned a few times over this meeting, that a lot of work continued over the summer. So in addition to staying up with community engagement and, and conversation, I have been, I've met with individual school board members from surrounding districts and looked at ways in which we might collaborate just a little bit. One example of a way that we found we could collaborate was connecting some local elected officials with the leaders of the Hopkins Education Foundation, and in this case, the Robinsdale, their equivalent of the Hopkins Education Foundation. I'm forgetting the exact name right now. But to ensure that we don't schedule our major events on the same day because then elected officials that would like to attend both can't. And that is something that happened last year. And so there are ways in which we can kind of streamline the things that we do and work together. I, robot, let's see, robotics continued throughout the school year, and so did band and marching band. And so I marched with the Hopkins marching band in the parade. There's been a variety of other smaller things that I did over the summer, and I'm looking forward to the year getting going again.
Good evening. I'm Rhoda Mary Perry Reed, Superintendent. I have provided my board report already earlier this evening. And I do have two children. Maddie will be in eighth grade at West. And then I have a high school senior as well.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name's Shannon Andreessen. This is some number of years I've been on the board. I can't remember. I'm in my second term. Sorry, everyone. And I have a senior this year at the high school, which I can't hardly believe it. And I also get to work as a special education paraprofessional in the district, which I enjoy, and I'm so excited to get back to school and be with those kiddos. And just wanted to remind everyone, I think Superintendent's report touched on it, but we do have an election coming up. Our staff is working diligently and very hard to make sure that this goes seamlessly. We will be, filing has closed. We will be electing some new school board colleagues. So just wanted to make everyone aware of that, to get out and vote. Your voice needs to be heard. And also, I don't know if we can say this from the table, but we would like you to vote in, also in our referendum coming up in our bond and CPL. So just a reminder, early voting starts September 19th and all the way up through Election Day on November 4th. And the Hef Block Party is coming up on September 13th. It's a great fun way to support Hopkins Education Foundation and the schools and teachers and students. And that happens in the downtown Hopkins area. And then I am on the board of Resource West, so wanted to let everyone know that they are starting their back-to-school supply drive. So community members can sign up and go there and pick out their backpack for the year. It's always a really exciting event. And they are also having a Gathering to Grow event, which helps support the scholarships that they do for early childhood. And Hopkins is one of the districts that provides that early childhood care. So that is a great way to support our families and a great organization. And that is on September 26th, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's a ton of fun. So those are my big things coming up.
Good evening. My name is Jason Ross. I have three kids in the system, two seventh graders and one fourth grader. And I do not have a board report tonight.
Hi, this is Jiming Zhao. I've got two kids in the district. They're in fifth grade and second grade at Shing Shing. They're in fifth grade and second grade at Shing Shing Eisenhower. I think we sent our kids for summer camps, Camp Royal, and they had a really good time. So I think the, the summer programming I first-hand experienced is very good. I guess things of note are, we had a, over the summer, the, the safety work went on and I got to meet our, our safety coordinator, Che Chi, and, sorry if I mispronounced that, and, and had a good, very good conversation with local leaders in, around safety, you know, things that we can do better as a school, coordinate better. And so that was really good. And yeah, thanks.
I am Jen Westmoreland. I am a proud graduate of Hopkins Schools. My experience when I was a student here a while ago is the reason that I went into education professionally and the reason I'm a professor today. And I have a rising ninth grader. I can't believe it. Probably won't be hanging out with your seniors, but she'll be in the same building and is very excited. And this is my eighth year on the school board. I will not be seeking reelection. And so I have been working with our student board reps over the summer. I've had the privilege of being the liaison to the student board reps since January, really working on a strong plan for recruitment and onboarding and then continuous engagement with younger students throughout this year and more robust participation in committees. So preparing all of that now so that when I leave the board that we can have a smooth transition to whoever will be the next liaison for the student board reps. As you know, they are brilliant. So basically, my job is scheduling the Google meets and they're doing all the rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Westmoreland. And I did also, I'm sorry, forget to mention, an exciting opportunity that I just learned is prob- is going to happen at Gatewood Elementary. We have been working on providing some before-school freedom, school-inspired offering for families. And that is going to happen this fall. And I just want to thank the partnership of people in the administration as well as Dr. Nolan for making that happen for our families. I think it's gonna be a great opportunity. And what I am hoping is that this pilot can roll out to other schools in the district because as we know, our offering in the summer is widely popular and does a lot for our community. So, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. So any Gatewood families paying attention, you can sign up for, it's going to be called, I think, Gator Academy, so.
That's cool.
Yeah, we're very excited.
That is so, thank you. That is amazing.
I'm excited.
I'm pretty sure Jalisa would love to listen, I mean, hear about that as well. I mean, she probably knows, but just. So, oh, I forgot to quickly mention, I will be at the state fair this, presented at state fair this Friday, the first day opens, I believe, on electric school buses again. So I did it last year with my coalition and we're gonna be back there again at 5:00 in the Echo Building. So if anyone's at the state fair, feel free to stop by to see us present and bring me some cheese curds.
Okay. So with that, I would look for a motion that the board accepts the incidental report as listed.
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Chair Andreessen.
Yes.
I would simply like to note that this, the community really should take a peek at it. It lists an enormous amount of resources. If families need something, there are tons of organizations that our district works with. And want to highlight that health office visit totals in the 2425 school year were
And that is up significantly from last year.
Up from the previous year.
So our, our health services staff is, is doing amazing things. Yes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the incidental report is accepted. So then I would look for a motion to approve the following resolution. It is hereby resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 270, Hopkins, Minnesota, meet in executive session to discuss negotiation strategy related to the HEA contract for the 2025-26 school year. That the meeting be held in person and commence immediately following the adjournment of this regular meeting. Further, that it be noted that all board members, superintendent and clerk, were duly notified of intention to call this executive session.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the executive session has been called. Thank you all for attending. I'm not gonna get, I can't gavel out till we adjourn. Change this adjournment thing.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night. Safe travels home.